Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Los Angeles City Council, and today is Wednesday, March 8th, 2006. We are meeting as we do every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday in City Hall, in the John Furaro Council Chambers on the third floor of the City Hall in room 340. And we invite members of the public to come down here, as well as to testify via our remote facility in Van Nuys City Hall, where individuals can come and by remote testify on any of the matters that are before us. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35, seen on the city's cable system. We are also rebroadcast in the evening, and for those who don't have access to cable but do have access to a computer, we are webcast on our city's homepage, www.lacity.org, where there is a wealth of information about city services and your elected officials. We also are broadcast on council phone, which is a phone number you can call in and listen to the proceedings of the Los Angeles City Council, as well as to our committee proceedings as well. There are fifteen members of the City Council, and we require two-thirds of them to be present in order to start the meeting, so we are waiting ten members. But I'd like to thank council members Grul, Perry, Weiss, Wesson, and Zine for being here with myself. That constitutes six members, and we are waiting four other members. We have excuses today from Mr. Labange, and Mr. Cardenas is here. We have Mr. Labange and Ms. Han are excused, so I'd like to ask Mr. Weezer, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Smith to make their ways. As soon as we have three more members, we will have a quorum, and we will begin the meeting. Thank you. For folks of the -- members of the public that are here, if it's your first time here, there are speaker cards in the back, which you can fill out if you'd like to be heard on items that have not yet had a public hearing, or for our general public comment on items that are not yet agendized. And you can give those cards to the sergeants-at-arms, and they will make sure that they get up here so we can call your name. Thank you. member Rosendahl, council member Weiss, council member Wesson, council member Zine for their attendance. We are waiting two more members, and we'd like to encourage council member Weezer, council member Padilla, council member Parks, council member Reyes, and council member Smith to make their way down. As soon as two of you are down here, we will have ten members in the quorum to begin the business of the council. Thank you.
Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum as president.
Okay, we now have a quorum, ten members. Thank you, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Smith. First order of business, please, Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimous vote, and the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Padilla moves, and Ms. Grul seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, those are approved.
Ms. President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Again, members of the public can fill out cards for our public comment period, which is on items which are not agendized for today but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction in the City Council. And I'd like to invite forward for two minutes apiece, starting with Dr. Benjamin Gilmore, and then Aracely Tlatoa, and Maria Avinia. Those will be our first three speakers. Welcome to City Council.
I'm here on behalf of the South Central Farmers, and I wanted to say that I think that the planned eviction of the South Central Farmers is absolute outrage. It's gonna -- it could potentially destroy a valuable resource in our community. The South Central Farm located on 41st and Alameda is a model of self-sufficiency, urban renewal, and to evict these farmers who have built an incredible resource is absolutely harmful to the community as a whole. We are here asking for a town hall meeting between the City Council, Mayor Villagrosa, and developer Ralph Horowitz, who now owns the land. I would respectfully ask anybody from the council to comment on this. Would it be possible to have an emergency town hall meeting with developer Ralph Horowitz, members of the City Council, and Mayor Villagrosa? And if not, why not? I mean, so I'd respectfully ask a response from somebody from the council.
We can't, under California state law, do a response, but if we can speak with you privately, but this is just for public comment, but we thank you.
No, but I would like to propose that what's gonna happen is --
What's that? You don't go into council, they won't respond to you. They cannot respond to public comment.
That's fine. So I think that what's gonna happen is, if these farmers are evicted, there's gonna be a standoff, there's gonna be civil disobedience, it's gonna look very bad for the city, it's gonna be a huge scene, and I think that a better solution than everybody going forward kind of blindly would be to have a special meeting to try to find a better solution to this problem. Perhaps the farm could be turned into a public park, which could raise revenue for the city. Perhaps Mr. Horowitz could agree to a lesser amount of money, but we need a town hall meeting to further discuss this, and I feel that the eviction of the farmers is unconscionable. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Appreciate your comments. Aracely Tlatoa.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Aracely Tlatoa, and I am a farmer at the South Central Farmers. I live five minutes away from my warehouse. In Los Angeles, there are a lot of warehouses. We need more green space in Los Angeles. There are fabrics bring only burn smoke, and what we breathe is bad for our health. So please, City Council, help us save our garden. Y aquí estamos y no los vamos. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Avinia? Maria Avinia? Is Maria Avinia here? Did I speak? Okay. Okay. Gracias por venir. Jose Nicolas? Does he like to speak?
Buenos dias.
Un momento por transacción.
Yo estoy aquí este --
Good morning, everybody.
También para --
I'm also here.
Para defender el lugar este que --
To defend this place.
De los lotes, pues, que están aquí en la 41.
The lot we have on 41.
Ah, yo soy nuevo ahí, tengo dos meses.
I am new there. I'm just, I have been there only for two months.
Ah, yo me siento bien ahí, se siente bien la familia, los niños.
I feel just fine, very comfortable, family and owners.
Y yo pienso que es un bien para, pues, para todos.
And I think it's very good for all of us.
Algo, algo tener, tener algo verde, algo este --
To have something green.
Pues árboles, este --
Trees.
No, nada más, este, pues, la ciudad que del --
Not just city and construction.
Yo pienso que esto es, es un lugar algo saludable para, para todos.
I think it's very healthy for all of us.
Ah, es todo, gracias.
That's it. Thank you.
Muchisimas gracias. Larla Maloney? Larla Maloney? Is Larla Maloney here? Okay. Maleka Gray?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Maleka Gray, and I'm here in support of the South Central Farmers and the South Central Farm. And like a lot of other people, I'm willing to defend the farm. And I went to the farm for the first time last year, and right away I realized this is a really amazing place, a really special place, and for the community that it represents, and also for the fact that it's the largest urban garden in the nation. And like so many thousands of people in L.A. believe, this is a city treasure. This is not something that the city should ever consider bulldozing, demolishing, or making smaller. And I think the City's Council should be ashamed of themselves, and I think Mayor Villagrosa should be ashamed of himself for not speaking out sooner and stopping the eviction and coming out with a firm plan of action to save the farm. And this is our demand, that the entire farm be saved. This has been the farmers' demand since the beginning, and not just a small part of it, but the entire thing. And so that's all I want to say today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Our next speaker is Josefina Corona, or Jose Corona. Okay. Gracias por venir. Sandra Benson?
Good morning. I am here to ask that the City Council take immediate action upon reversing the eviction of the South Central Farmers. This is absolutely vital for all of us. We all need to breathe, and the concrete does not give us oxygen like trees do. I've been staying at this farm for about a week, and it is absolutely beautiful. It is filled with cultural heritage. It is a safe place for children and grandmothers. It is vital to the health of this city. Please take immediate action to reverse this very, very unnecessary eviction of this farm. You look around in its concrete and warehouses and industry, and then you go inside this one city block, and it is filled brimming with life, birdsongs in the morning. This is a network of life that these families need. It feeds 360 families. It's so vital that these people have access to fresh food. You don't see fresh food in South Central. You see warehouses, and we cannot eat concrete, and we all need to breathe. It helps the whole world. Please look into your hearts and realize, we can't let this slip by. Take immediate action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Our next speaker is Cesar Mirada.
Hello, City Council. My name is Cesar Mirada. I'm here as a member and representative of Los Angeles Mission College Mecha and the United for Education Coalition of the Northeast San Fernando Valley, and we are here, and I am here personally to speak on behalf of the South Central Farmers. Yeah, I see a lot of disrespect here for the community. When I think about my City Council, I think about representatives representing people. I see you guys standing, having side conversations, and seriously, I personally feel disrespected, and I know the South Central Farmers feel disrespected, not only by your lack of interest, by your lack of attention, but by your lack of action. You guys have not acted in the right manner for these policies that have been taking place, and these moves that have been made. Come on, what's wrong with you guys? You guys should look, that this is a viable, viable source of life. It gives life, it gives oxygen, it gives room for kids. You guys should pay attention to these things, not have side comments. This is community comes. Is that what open forum has come to, where you guys just have side comments and let people speak without paying attention to them?
We're listening, sir.
I guess that's what it is. I apologize that I'm coming out like this, but the United for Education Coalition takes a firm stand on behalf of the South Central Farmers, and we are here to let you know that we know that this place is beautiful, we know that these people are beautiful, and we know what has occurred. Now, the city can't take action, and the city does have that within its powers. Now, why action hasn't been taken upon, I don't know. I really can't see why you guys haven't gone out there personally. Whether it's your district or not, go out there, check it out. Eat with the people. Talk to them. Si hablo en español, hableles a su gente, because we're tired of this. You know, we shouldn't be having to fight for life. We should be fighting for books. We're not fighting for the right things here, and obviously, you guys have your priorities misconstrued, because this is important. It's a treasure of L.A., and we're gonna fight this with civil disobedience in any manner possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel French? Is Daniel French here? No Daniel French? Okay. Samuel Sanchez? Daniel French, please. And our last speaker is Samuel Sanchez.
Hello. My name is Daniel French. I'm here as a representative of Students for Social Justice, and I'm a recently graduated sociologist. I'm here, I guess I don't need to lean over the whole time. I'm here to support the South Central Farmers of Los Angeles and the postponement or the stopping of their eviction process from their lot at 41st and Alameda. People are speaking to a lot of environmental aspects of the farm, and those are really important. I wanted to speak to the racial dynamics that exist in the community. After the '92 riots, this land was, as I understand, after the '92 riots, this farm was given to the community to hold, to be able to farm their own food and to build kind of community interconnections. What I've seen over the past five months at this farm is people from different countries, from Jamaica, from Trinidad, from Mexico, Guatemala, and El Salvador, of course, from, I'm sorry, the Middle East, from Palestine, and I've seen these people interact with Latinos, even with only Spanish-speaking people, and trying to bridge like interconnected relationships across ethnic lines. And so I see this as a space that can mitigate racial tensions that exist in the community. And I think if we don't preserve these kinds of spaces, we're asking for more uprisings, we're asking for more problems in the community, and already violent, gang-ridden communities. So please, please support healthy communities, holistic, integrated thinking in city planning. And I do ask you again for a public meeting in which the City Council and the mayor of Los Angeles addresses how this land was sold in a backroom deal three years ago. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then Samuel Sanchez?
Good morning. I represent Food Not Bombs. I live in the San Pedro area, and I see poverty in all its forms. You guys may have seen me, but you probably didn't hear me because you weren't paying attention. Jan Perry, her district is South Central. She's never once come by the farm. You would think that if somebody was gonna destroy a 14-acre farm that had 350 families on it, they would at least look at it. The backroom deal we're talking about took place with you guys. You all signed, you all signed it to release this farm back to Horowitz illegally. You did not consult the community, and we demand a town hall meeting. There are too many issues here not to address them. If you're gonna sell the farm, then have a town hall meeting first. At the least, that's the least you could do for the community. Hold a town hall meeting, address their issues, and let their voice be heard. You cannot replace this. And if you think that we're gonna stop coming, if you destroy this farm, you're wrong, because we're gonna keep coming back and tell you how wrong you were to do it in the first place. The entire sale was illegal, and this is a valuable part of our community. I can't stress that enough. You can't even find an example of it anywhere else. Try. Try to think of another example. Try to think of somewhere else that has what the South Central Farm has, where it has it, where it needs it. And I also would like to personally invite Ms. Perry to come down to the farm on Sunday for the farmers' market.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, if you want to. Councilmember Smith.
Mr. President, I know Dion's gonna be upset with this, but I'm not talking to them. I'm responding to some issues, and I think it has to be said, and we've tried to say it before, but I'm gonna say it again. I am tired of hearing this complaint, that there's a behind-the-doors deal. We were ordered by a court to take an action. We were ordered by a court of law to take an action, whether we like it or not. We didn't have a choice in this matter. We were ordered by a court to give that property back and get the cash back from the deal. It was not a behind-the-doors deal, it was not a closed-session deal. It was mandated by a judge of the court, and the city did what it had to do under the laws of the United States of America.
Okay. Excuse me. If we can have order in the chambers. We have, okay. We have one speaker remote from our Van Nuys facility. Jim Alger, if we can have ITA assist, and we will take his testimony right now for public comment. Mr. Alger?
Good morning. I was gonna come down here this morning with Mary Edwards, or Wade Hunter, president of the North Valley Coalition, or a bunch of other people, but I decided, why bother? Mr. Smith, when you ran for office, you claimed to be the only candidate with a plan to close Sunshine Canyon once and for all. Your words, not mine. Now, three years later, we have seen no such plan. Surely, if you should have known in your nearly 20 years of work as chief of staff, whether or not you could have actually closed Sunshine Canyon when you made that promise. And you wonder where our cynicism comes from. Our mayor, while a candidate and since being elected, made a pledge not to renew the contract of Sunshine Canyon in writing, and even threatened a veto should the City Council approve it. Now he stands as one of the chief supporters in extending the contract. And you wonder where our cynicism comes from. This community has listened to the lies of politicians for decades. The community has watched BFI get top-level meetings with politicians on all levels of government, while community leaders, neighborhood councils, and average residents get pushed to the side. And you wonder where our cynicism comes from. What is happening here is nothing more than a betrayal of community trust, cleverly wrapped up in a package of smoke and mirrors by a council office, that is so blinded by hatred of community leaders that they do not even know, that they don't realize that communicating with the people can get you everywhere, and the old-school politics in this city is over. In my term as neighborhood council president, I have often debated many of you in that horseshoe on various issues, but I have only had one attack not just me, but my board members as well. I have listened while the chief of staff for CD-12 first wanted me to sign a letter saying Mr. Smith was smarter than me, which is just beyond comprehension, then went on to tell me that if I had anything to say that I did not agree with Mr. Smith, I should simply be quiet. Well, I tried that. That doesn't seem to be working too much, and to remain silent would violate the oath I took to the people who elected me. If you guys in CD-12 weren't so busy worrying what license plate is on a car, threatening to sue neighborhood councils, or taking credit for their accomplishments, we wouldn't be backed against the wall at the 11th hour yet again. And for those council members in the horseshoe who may wonder why I hold Mr. Smith personally accountable for what's going on at Sunshine Canyon despite all of your praises for him, you didn't attack me. He did.
If I could ask you to conclude, Mr. Alger. That's two minutes.
He did. And you didn't promise to close Sunshine Canyon. Mr. Smith did.
Thank you, Mr. Alger. That closes our public comment for today. Thank folks who come down to here or Van Nuys to give public comment. Again, that can be done each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Next order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, before beginning the agenda, there has been a request to continue item 31 to Friday.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues? If not, we will continue item 31 till Friday.
There's also been a request to continue item 45 to Friday.
Is there any objection to continuing that? Okay. Item 45 will be continued till Friday as well.
On the regular agenda, item one is an item notice for public hearing, and the applicant consents to a continuance to April 12th.
Okay. On this, Mr. Padilla? Yes? Yes.
Mr. President, actually, this item was not acted on by committee request. I know it was agendized on the full council but asset. The file will be referred back to committee to allow Plum to consider it before it comes here.
Okay. So any objection to that? If not, let's go ahead and send item number one back to Plum. Okay? Item number two?
Item two is also an item notice for public hearing, and the applicant consents to a continuance to April 5th.
Okay. If there's no objection, colleagues, that'll be continued till April 5th. That's item number two.
Item three is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District Two. A motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay. Ms. Grul, do you have a motion on this item? Excuse me. Excuse me one sec. Ms. Grul? Is that microphone? If we can, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. To move approval of that application.
Move approval? Okay. And if there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items four through 51 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials four through 51? Mr. -- Mr. Zine?
Item number 12, I'd like that received and filed and report, the report, and send the ordinance back to the Board of Public Works for further consideration on item 12. And I'd like to also call 32 special.
13 special, Mr. Zine, and that will be moved on item 12 if there's no objection.
32 special.
32, you said?
32 special.
So not 13 at all? 13?
No, not 13.
Okay. 32 special, Mr. --
And then on 12?
Yep. We'll have that before. Mr. Reyes?
51, please.
51 special? Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
20.
20. And Mr. Cardenas?
47 special.
47 special? Okay. Colleagues, I have 20, 32, 47, and 51. And Mr. Zine's motion's on item 12 to receive and file and send back that other part. Any others specials? Okay. If we can, please prepare the roll and the balance, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 52 through 59 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Item 52 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that one on the desk, please.
That would leave council items 53 through 59.
53 and 59. Okay, we have a card on 53, so let's call that special. And for the rest, we will open public hearing and close public hearing. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
Please?
61. Not quite. We'll make sure we get that called, though, when we do. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll and the balance. Seeing none, let's prepare the roll and the balance and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. And 59, let's send that forthwith, please. Next items?
Item 60 is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold item 60 for the closed session on the desk.
On the continuation agenda, item 61 is an item for which public hearing has been held. The item has been submitted without recommendation, a motion is required.
Okay, we'll call that special. Mr. Reyes?
Mr. President, do you wish to take up the special meeting at this time?
Yes, let's recess the regular meeting, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Gruel, Haun, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, we just have this one item. Why don't we go ahead and continue that item and recess the special meeting and continue that into the regular meeting if we can reconvene that? Okay? All right, first?
Do you wish to take up the commission appointment?
Yes, let's take the commission appointment first and if we can please?
That is item 52, and that's the appointment of Father John Bacchus to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families.
Father Bacchus, welcome if you'd join us here at the central table. And I know Mr. Labange, who chairs the committee that oversees the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families, is not here this morning, but I know that you were unanimously recommended out of committee and wanted to thank you for putting yourself forward. Obviously, an incredible leader in this town, and we will call on our honorary Greek member, Mr. Zine, to make the first comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Father. Whatever commission you wish, I give you 110% support. I know that you have a wonderful group of people who support you throughout the city of Los Angeles, not only in your own parish, but throughout the city of Los Angeles. I know the wonderful work you've done, so you'll work well with this because the formation of the family, children, youth, and the families, the development of children, the connection with the family, the connection with church, connection with the society that we have, a high recommendation. You're a wonderful person, wonderful man of the cloth to, to serve in that capacity. So it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the nomination. You got my support and I'm sure all of my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Labange and Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Council President. It's great to have you at the center table as the Commissioner, Father.
Thank you.
I know you've been entrenched in many of the real issues when it comes to the community fabric, especially in Pico, Normandy, and that pocket where this great cathedral stands, great church that you represent. Can you tell me what you see as your role in this commission, given the exposure you've had and working with a city of frustrations, and how timiness we can or can't be, and the urgency you see in dealing with the issues that are before us?
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Please, on my time.
Thank you of the City Council. What I hope to bring to the commission is really to work with my fellow commissioners and others to really coordinate the many services that are in the city. I think what I see is that there are so many services in the city being provided in this area of children and youth and families, and I think sometimes one group doesn't speak to the other. My important contribution, I think if I can make a contribution, is I am concerned about the area of crime, security for children and families. I'm interested in after-school programs because everything stems out of that. If you don't have a safe neighborhood, if you don't have a neighborhood where children feel that they can walk the streets, go to school, and have opportunities to play, then you really have nothing. So I want to work with all of the city agencies to try to better coordinate, speak to one another in a more effective way, to try to marshal whatever forces we have and resources in a more effective way on behalf of the children.
It'll be great to work with you now that you're on the other side of the table and we'll share?
Thank you, Councilman.
Our efforts together and continue working as hard as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted, Mr. Chairman, to introduce my daughter Katia Bacchus. I'm a married priest, in case some of you are looking at me here. I'm a Greek Orthodox priest, married with four children. And this, my daughter Katia, who works for the city attorney's office upstairs.
We are lucky to have two Bacchus's in the House. Mr. Labange is our next speaker and then Mr. Parks and Mr. Rosenthal before Mr. Parks.
Father John, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. Labange.
Usually I say bless me, Father, for I have sinned, but I won't say that this morning. Channel 35 on, for those who you know that story. This is a very special individual here with a very special family, who's been a driving force, as Mr. Reyes spoke of earlier, in changing a part of our community. Tell me more what you would like to just see in the, in the gentle way that you move people in the right direction.
Well, we're working, Mr. Labange, on after-school programs right now for children. We are starting a community center right down the street from the St. Sophia Cathedral with programs for children in tutoring and mentoring. We see that in the areas that we are, in the first council district, there's a very, very high dropout rate with children. We see that there are children living in poverty, living in families with one parent. And we, we are trying to work very hard to at least get them to stay in school, get them to have programs after school. So this is really a concern for us in our neighborhood because education, safety, the area of crime is a very important thing. I work with then-Chief Parks, who was very instrumental in helping us in our area, in the area of crime control. So these are the areas that I'm interested in, but of course, these are interrelated to everything else. I'm not a one-issue person. I think safety is paramount.
Let me ask a question. Do you think our schools should start later in the day instead of some schools start at 7:30 and 7:45 and 7:55 and 8:05? Do you think it should start at 9:00 and run a little later?
Well, I'm not sure that I am the best person qualified to make comments on when schools should start. I do think that there should be a number of options because I think a number of schools have different schedules. I know that the middle schools in our area even have programs that start in the afternoon. That's something I think that I, at this point, would be presumptuous to make comments on. The importance is that I think using the public sector and the private sector, you see, I think the churches, the large faith communities, can do a great deal to bring their own parishioners to volunteer to do things for children for after-school activities. I was involved in 2000, without belaboring the point, on the National Commission of America's Promise with then-General Colin Powell. I represented the National Church about volunteerism. We need to somehow recapture the volunteer spirit. If more and more people were to work with this commission and other departments of the city to provide children with a safe environment, to provide them with educational opportunities, to provide them with some other job training, I think we can expand the influence and the ability of the city to do its work. So I'm looking to expand volunteerism.
Well, I know the work that you've done at Byzantine Latino Quarter is so defined and the work you've done with St. Thomas next door and Loyola and you got a library, I think, over on Arlington?
Right.
Is it a brand-new library?
So we're working very hard to get the?
But to coordinate all that together, I know you're going to get a new police station and fire station there on Vermont.
Right.
You have it all right there. It could be overwhelming, but if you take that task, there's no one better than you, Father John.
We need to get people involved because, without sounding in the cliche area, without the future for our children, we really have no city.
Right. Thank you very much for serving the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosenthal is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Parks.
Father John Bacchus, good to be with you.
Mr. Rosenthal, congratulations.
Thank you. You and I know each other from a relationship that I had with you with Adelphia Cable. You did a summer program, would you explain that?
We do a summer camping program for at-risk children.
On my time.
We call it Camp Oxios, which is a Greek word for which means worthy. We give free camping programs for inner-city children, children that I've talked about that are at risk, and it, it is a program that helps build character, values, more than self-worth. Our motto is that every child is worthy of God's love, worthy of our support, and worthy of success. So we raise money and we send several hundred children every, every summer to a special camp, which is non-denominational. We're not pushing religion here or denominationalism, but we're pushing self-worth. We're pushing the idea that there's a future for everyone, a good future if they want it. So we're doing that.
Father, you also have put a mural up, and you have wings on the mural, and Byzantine Latino. Would you explain that and the motto?
Well, this is the city of angels, again, with no religious connotation, and we cannot do anything in this city unless we work with one another. And the mural basically has two angels embracing each other, and the motto of our neighborhood there now is that we are each angels with one wing, we can only fly embracing one another. So this idea that we need each other, I think, is the core of the city, to work with one another and to bring as many people to the table to participate is very important, especially with children and youth.
And Father, when you talk about children and youth and the work you've done, explain how this will translate itself into the role as a commissioner?
Well, I want to support the commission to try to coordinate the existing programs. I know there are $500 million of a budget of the city that goes toward children, youth, and families. There are dozens of departments working, and I think we need to have a closer review to make sure that we maximize the investment the city puts in these programs, that one program talks to the other program, that we don't duplicate services when necessary. And this is not to threaten people's turf or territory, but to make all the programs, half a billion dollars of a budget should be as effectively used as possible. And if I can have some impact in that, then this is what I want to do. I want to play a positive role to support the existing commission and to make it have the ability to better coordinate and better deliver these services.
Thank you, Father, and we appreciate you stepping forward to be a commissioner. We applaud the mayor once again with, with putting an outstanding individual on a commission, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Our last speaker will be Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Father John, I just wanted to say welcome to the city family.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, I still call you Chief.
The work you've done in the area around the cathedral is phenomenal, having been there for a couple of events, and also, many people may not be aware, when we started a clergy farm in LAPD, you were one of the first members, guided it, gave a great deal of understanding of what the needs were, pulled together a number of pastors in the city to talk about some of the issues that were relevant throughout the city. And I think that's the kind of impact that you've made on this city. For those who have not been to the Father John's church, it's one of the most beautiful cathedrals I've ever been in. And so you owe it to yourself just to drop in and look at it. Also, you may not be aware, but Bobby Parks is on that same commission.
Ah.
And so you get a chance to renew those acquaintance and work with her as you've done in the past.
Just follow her lead, Father John.
I will, I will. I know, I know Mrs. Parks very well.
But we're going to say thank you for putting yourself up for this service, and also want to thank you for one of our city employees here is a city attorney, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and congratulations to you.
So obviously a lot of warmth and support and love for you, Father John, around here.
Thank you, sir.
And I want to add my, my name to that chorus as well and congratulate you on this nomination.
Thank you.
We look forward to your service, and I anticipate a good vote here, so let's go ahead and do it. Open the roll, please, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
All right. Next order of business, please.
Item 20 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
I'm sorry, also, let's send that forthwith, which we just passed, and also 29 and 30, Mr. Labange asked to be sent forthwith, if we can do those as well. Number 20, oh, sorry, that was called special by?
Councilmember Parks.
Okay, Mr. Parks, number 20.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask Bill Fugioca and Jerry Miller to come up. Colleagues, colleagues, we, and also Sharon, Sharon at the door, Sharon? Just tell her it's an SC football game and she'll show up. But colleagues, often, we deal with parts of the budget, or we're dealing with the funding of different programs. We often lose sight of how well this city is received on a national basis as relates to how we prepare our budget documents, how we move forward on developing our program budget. But it's important to realize that it just doesn't happen overnight, it's just not a one-person-driven program, that between the CLA, the CAO, and also our city clerk, Lorraine Brathwaite, would you come up? Who does the work for the Budget and Finance Committee? But I just wanted to identify them and honor them that for the ninth consecutive year, the city of LA has received an award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada because of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is something that amongst municipalities is something that people strive for, they basically look at it as being an honor, and I don't think we should let this pass by a receive and file without asking Bill and Jerry to speak and identify their staffs. And I'm going to say again to Lorraine, for your dealing with our day-to-day Budget Committee and all the things we ask you to do, I want to say personally, thank you, because without you, we would not be able to get many of the things done and brought to the council. But Bill, let me ask you to make some comments.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman, for the recognition. Behind me are just some of the CAO staff who are responsible for putting this budget together. As I mentioned, that the Budget and Finance Committee is truly a collaborative effort between our office and the, and your CLA's office. And Jerry's here, and he's going to recognize a couple of folks in his office, but behind me without, it's hard to name everyone, because there's probably, right now, we're in the middle of putting this budget together, and there are at least 80 people upstairs working on this budget so we can get it to print and then, and then, and then work and be with the mayor when he releases it on April 20th. But of note is I want to recognize Alan Sant, who's our budget director and the CAO, and there's Ray Serrana, who's back here, who's in charge of Group One, and there's Group One folks, and there's, there's other analysts here, then I won't waste everyone's time naming names, but it wouldn't be right for me to, to, to not recognize the other, about 80 folks, but we have our friend here, right here. Go ahead, Jerry.
Well, I think it's interesting to note, if you look behind me, Bill's budget team and my budget team, and we have a week and they have eight months. No, this is my old Stadtmann grad, and, and the CAO does a remarkable job with budget, but as does my staff, they're just magnificent in what they go through from April 20th until you have a budget in place. We should have John Wickham up here too, and Mark Torres and Maria Gutierrez, and really all of the staff gets mobilized, and, and Avak getting those motions done, and of course, Ivania Solbavaro getting all your, all of the multitude of changes and motions that go through. So they all deserve a huge round of applause.
We have a number of councilmembers who'd like to add their words. Mr. Parks, you want to?
I just want to make sure that you identify them personally, the people that work on there, so that, that's why we brought them here. Oh, thank you.
The folks behind me, I mentioned Alan Sant and Ray, there's also Terry Munoz, our executive officer, Elizabeth Lee, Chimmy Chang, Matthias Farfon, Amari Sour, B. Campbell, Patty Huber, Earl Taylor, Wilson Poon, Robert Androtti, and then Pat Canfield. And that's just, again, a small number. You know, we may have be greater a number than our CLA friends, but the one thing we want to emphasize is that this is an effort that, that's done in concert with these, with both of our offices. When we bring it before you during the ad hoc Budget Committee and then subsequently to the full council, it's two offices working jointly and working together. And I think the strength of our respective offices is when we can speak as, in, in one voice and speak on behalf of what's in the best interest of the city, and we're very proud of our relationship with the CLA. Thank you.
And obviously, you know, Sharon and Lynn, and, and also Maria Gutierrez and Mark Torres and Donna Condor are, are sort of core Budget Committee team. But then during the budget itself, obviously, there's Avakatayan who never comes up here to be recognized, and Ivania Solbavaro, and Rafael Prieto, and Roy Morales, and really the entire office, because of the compressed timeframe, you know, steps in and looks at their areas of expertise and gives the, the core budget team a lot of advice and input so they can put the budget together for you. So, really, our whole office deserves to be recognized on budget.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruel will be our first speaker, followed by Ms. Weezer, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief. I wanted to stand up and thank both the CAO and CLA staff, and as you may recall, some of you, and probably Avak, who gave me a really hard time, and Sharon, I think, which was my first year. I'd only been elected like two weeks when we started about budget, and I introduced all these motions, and you kindly drafted them and looked at me like, what is she doing? But we did bring those motions back to fund some projects. But we do have the best budget team ever. Mr. Parks, I think, however, I heard them all say last night, no more community meetings that go till 9:30 on a weeknight. But anyways, they are truly dedicated, they answer sometimes our very detailed, sometimes naive, sometimes complicated questions, and we've always known how great you are. It's nice to have someone else recognize what you do every day. And the budget really is the critical blueprint for how we address the community's concerns in our neighborhoods, and you're always willing to help, and just wanted to add my congratulations and how much we look forward to the budget process this year. Leslie Polner will give me a hard time, but she literally gets excited when those budget books come into our office so we can go through them and see what's happening. So, and I know...
We can help her with that problem.
Is this, you can help her with that problem? Some of you, again, I think, probably feel the same way, you get excited about what is the meat and potatoes of City Hall and public services is creating that budget and making it work. So, thank you very much from all of us. We do appreciate what you do every day, not just today. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Parks, do you want to?
I was just going to ask Ms. Gruel, who left early, if they left at 9:30, so...
I went to another event after that, so I don't know about...
So, if any of them left at 9:30, they left?
Mr. Weezer can connect.
Early, I'd like to know who they were.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I could vouch, Ms. Gruel's working hard after that as well. But I just want to congratulate you all on this award, and I have one question. Have they all passed an algebra equation? Can they? And we're going to show that algebra is relevant today's... Pardon me?
We have our own city math.
There you go. Congratulations, and it's great to, thank you, Councilmember Parks, for bringing them here, because it's great to congratulate people hardworking out there, doing the job for the City of Los Angeles, and oftentimes, we didn't do this often as we should. And oftentimes, if you think about it, in this day and age, when so many public agencies are cutting dollars, the budget staff are not the people's best friend nowadays. But here we are, recognizing our hardworking budget staff for the work they do, and it's not easy. I know that when I was at the Board of Education, we cut $1.5 billion in the last three or four years, and it's difficult times, and we're facing them here, but with good staff like this, we'll get through this, and thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Cardenas?
I contend that you really need to admit to yourselves that it wasn't so much the line-by-line budget outline that you had that got you this award, it was those two pictures of David Lada from the Department of Building and Safety, that's what did it. I mean, that just jumps out at you, and I bet you the governor's asking for an autographed picture of him, right? I just wanted to, the cynical side, that's not even the cynical side of what I see here. The cynical side, I think this was a ploy, but it didn't work. I think this was a ploy to expose how many people we have working in the budget in the City of Los Angeles, for those people who think that government is too big or too bloated or what have you. But like I said, that didn't work, because what they did, they inadvertently proved that we are good government and we are doing good work, and that you do a tremendous, tremendous job. If the average citizen even understood some basic things like this, that the City of Los Angeles doesn't have this big vault that has several billion dollars in it that we sit on and we pull it out chunk by chunk and we use it. If they just understood that what you do is you actually put together a prospective of what the budget will be for the forthcoming 12 months, and then you strategically figure out how we can utilize those dollars to benefit our constituents, even though, respectively, there's very little dollars sitting anywhere. It's all coming forward in the coming months. People just don't understand that, and they don't understand how difficult your job is, and they don't understand that basically what you're doing is you're putting together an expert document that is predicting the future, as precarious as it might be, and you always come very, very close to predicting the future down to the last few dollars. And I think that's a tremendous feat, and that's something that people don't appreciate. But obviously, somebody does, and they recognize that you have a wonderful team, a very expert team, a very special team, and the best team. There's just one more question that I have. Does this award come with some kind of get-out-of-deficit, structural deficit free card? Is there any financial thing coming along with this award? Is this just one of those plaques? Anybody want to answer that?
Just a plaque.
It's a plaque.
It's a very nice plaque.
It's a very nice plaque. We are very appreciative in this city, and we appreciate the plaque. It would have been nice to get that little card along with it so we can wipe out all of our structural deficit, but we have all of you to do that work, and I'm sure we're going to do the finest work we've ever seen coming into the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Smith?
Well, thank you. You know, I've had the pleasure of working in this room for 26 years, and in that time, we've done actually 29 budgets. We had three of them one year, if you can believe that, after Prop 13 passed. But all those years, the CLA and CAO kind of worked in their own little domains and did their own thing, and there wasn't always great communication. And what's happening now between the two, the CAO and CLA's office, is really a phenomenal working relationship you all should be very proud of. I took your budget last year to my neighborhood councils, and we gave it to them on a computer. We went to the DeVry Institute and set up 10 working groups of neighborhood councils with the city budget you prepared, and the computer said, go make changes. What would you do? If you had the ability to change anything you wanted, what would you do? And all morning long, when they came back, they could make no more than a 2% change in the budget, 2%. It shows how good you guys are, because you really balance everything, and you come forward with a document that is really well thought out and balanced, and when challenged, these neighborhood councils saying, oh, you've got big problems and you can fix it, they couldn't fix it, because you guys really think it out. And so, congratulations for working together. It's really a pleasure to be on the committee and work with you, and it's always fun to wait for Bill to take one of our general managers on and say something that we all want to quote over and over, or even put on a T-shirt. It's always fun to watch. But anyway, congratulations, you're a great team, both sides of this team, a great working effort that break pride to us and the City of LA, and makes it possible for us to go out to our neighborhood councils and say, we're doing the best job we can with what we're given, and it's well thought out and well balanced, and it's a thoughtful approach to governance, and you're well deserving that award. So, thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, next.
Yes, I've been looking at everybody's faces there to see who are the real folks with the sharp pencils in this great city. I'm new, and this is my first budget process I'm going through as an elected official. So, I'm happy to hear my colleagues say all the great things they're saying. But I want you to know that the process we're going through now will be a learning experience for me, and I hope to share this all with my constituents. My constituents have a lot of concerns about our budget priorities and how we generate our revenue. So, now that I see such a great group of people here that have won an award in the past, I look forward to you educating me, giving me the insight that I should have on these issues. And I know you both and the whole teams think out of the box, and you're very straightforward and very professional. And I know the mayor has some major plans. So, when we talk about structural deficits, I'm going to keep asking, what does that mean? When we talk about lack of revenue for this or priorities for that, I know you're going to give us good insight, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of three months until we get that budget together for the new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to chime in with all of my colleagues, congratulate you all. There's two people who are always here in council, Mr. Miller, Mr. Fujioka, and they take the good and the bad at the hot seat, and I'm sure the rest of you are back there looking and saying, now, what are we going to change? What are we going to adjust? What are we going to modify? When it comes to the budget time, I know how the tables set up here, how the chairs set up here, how it goes into battle mode, and how the mayor's budget then comes to us, and we sit here and go through this for sometimes weeks, sometimes months. Fortunately, the last couple of times, it's been a relatively smooth process. But I want to offer my congratulations to each and every one of you. You do work every single day that the public doesn't recognize, that oftentimes, we don't realize is taking place, but when it comes to those dollars and cents, that's what takes care of the sidewalks, the streets, the police, the fire, and all those municipal employees, and all those folks who are waiting for contracts to get resolved. Do all of you folks behind, Mr. Miller, Mr. Fujioka, have a contract? So, you're all happy? You're all, I don't see any hands, so you must be all happy.
They're all non-represented.
Oh, you're non-represented? Okay, so you don't have to worry about a contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wesson?
Good morning, Mr. President and members. We are only, we around this horseshoe are only as good as the people that we surround ourselves with. To Jerry, to Bill, to all of you, you make us look good. And that's why it's important that we acknowledge your receiving of this award. I also personally want to throw in that my chief of staff, Charme Banpool, won an award like this in a different category. So, I recognize how important this is, and I do think it's our responsibility to say to you that you've done a good job, and it's a pleasure working with you. This is my second stint in city government. I came here as a chief of staff myself, so I'm a staff guy, so I recognize the importance of staff. And I say to each and every one of you, thank you very much, you make us look good. Jerry, since I've been back, you and your office has been phenomenal, helping me staff up and to get the things that I need, and Fujioka, Fuji, my dear friend, we go back to when we were both CETA employees. Wow. We were CETA employees with the County of Los Angeles, and I knew that there were great things for you then. Bill, you've always been brilliant, your shop is top-notch, the people that work for you respond well. So, I just wanted to get up and add to all of the voices that have already spoken to commend you and say to you that I am so honored to work with all of you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange?
What did we make?
The CETA program was a job program in the early 70s.
Yeah. Comprehensive Employment Training Act, Comprehensive Employment Training Act, and I started on that too as well. So, it's an amazing process. But I just want to thank each and every one of you. I know it's very busy right now, but I appreciate when you go out off-budget and go out into the yards, into the parks, into the places that we oversee and view, so you could learn firsthand, as you do, the importance of what this process is all about. And I especially want to thank the CLA staff, all of you who help, and I see you on weekends sometimes, out there working with the community, which is a new thing. Bill, I want to thank you for your great leadership, and it's very important that your leadership with the CAO and the work that you've done and be able to help this city. And Jerry, your leadership as well, it's so important. So, as someone who benefits by this, I do like to wrestle a little on this issue, because sometimes I see it a little different way. It's important to have the truth of what the dollars are and make sure that we maximize them. This is the ninth year that you've won that, so that means you're consistent, which is so important. I don't know if the Los Angeles Daily News will have a headlines tomorrow saying, CAO Budget Team Receives Ninth Award. I don't think so, but if Ron Kay is watching, Ron, there's an ideal for you. But I think it's just so important that you work hard and be good for the people of Los Angeles, because there's a history here. There's a history here why they built this grand city hall, this tall city hall that is the people's building, and you're the people's representative to make sure that the budgets are correct. I thank you all for what you do, and if ever I could help you or my staff or any of us, I'm sure we're all there for you, because you help us. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. This is Mr. Kay on the phone. He says, not in your wildest dreams. Wanted to congratulate as well the entire team, the CAO, on top of our bond rating, which reflects the good work that we all do around here, but especially the CAO's office does on our budget. I want to thank them for really showing the people of Los Angeles, the government can be a force for good and is a force for clarity and good judgment, and of course, the CLA's office and the ongoing sleep deprivation experiment that is known as Sharon's, so for her good work as well when it comes to time to turn it around from the CLA's side as well. So, congratulations. And with that, we will take a vote to note this once again. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 32 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have a representative from the city attorney's office, I believe she's in the chambers on item number 32. There she is, with all her bags and books. Good morning.
Good morning. I thought there was someone from LAPD here, too.
LAPD here on this item 32, please come forward.
Yes.
This is the nuisance hotel motel ordinance, and I've received a number of calls from motels in certain parts of the City of Los Angeles concerned about the ordinance, and I just wanted to go through a brief explanation as to the impact. It doesn't apply to each and every hotel motel in the City of Los Angeles, but it applies to those specific hotels, motels in the City of Los Angeles that cause police problems. And I'll see if you could go into some detail on that, and then we could hear from the LAPD representative.
Well, at this point, I believe this is simply an instruction for us to draft an ordinance, but as far as the components of the ordinance, it's correct that the prohibition on short-term rentals would apply only to the motels that are not full-service motels. Those are the ones that are causing most of the crime problems in the city, and so I think that's probably the one item that is the cause of most concern. We have been in discussions with the Hotel Motel Association regarding this proposed ordinance, and for the most part, they agree with the provisions of the ordinance, and they're fine with the restrictions on short-term rentals. So, as we go forward with the drafting of this ordinance, we're going to remain in touch with them to make sure that we're all on the same page.
And the crime problems that affect not only the establishment, the surrounding communities, if you can reflect on those?
Well, is this on? Okay. With respect from the investigation and law enforcement perspective, short-term rental, obviously, or it is apparent that it lends itself to prostitution or an opportunity it facilitates, it makes prostitution easier, when a motel or hotel owner can rent a room over and over and over again, as well as the other sections that require identification of guests and maintenance of complete and accurate records, that also helps us. It's a deterrent, because frequently, people that are coming to the location to participate in crime are discouraged because they don't want to be identified, and also, when someone is involved in crime, we can go and check the motel registry and have an account or idea of who's inside of the location, and that assists us with our investigations.
And in addition, if you identify yourself also for the record?
Detective Eric Moore from Vice Division.
And in addition to the activity of the prostitution nature which take place at the establishment, what about the surrounding area, the impact of crime in addition to the prostitution which would take place at the establishment?
Well, absolutely. I mean, if a location has a concentration of hotels that have short-term rates, it has been my personal experience to see usually a higher level of prostitution and other criminal activity in the area that directly affects the area negatively.
And that would be the quality of life in that particular community?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I would ask, what else does the city attorney have to do as far as drafting this ordinance to move it forward?
Well, we will certainly work with the Hotel Motel Association to make sure that, you know, they agree with the various provisions of the ordinance. We'll work with the community as well to make sure that we address their concerns, because as Detective Moore said, when you have prostitution, you have crimes at a particular location, that generates a lot of complaints for us from the surrounding community, because invariably, if there are prostitutes in the motel, they're loitering outside the motel and on the streets around the motel. And so, all of these provisions are designed to really reduce crime at the various motels. Also, another problem that we've had with the ordinance, the way it exists currently, is that the people who own the motel would frequently disclaim responsibility for the registration requirements, because typically, they have clerks who won't even be there a short period of time, sometimes have been in the country for a short period of time, don't speak English, et cetera. So, we have problems holding the establishment accountable, because the people who are actually registering people into the motels are there for such short periods of time. So, one of the things we would put into the ordinance is an accountability provision for the people who actually own the establishment, as opposed to the clerks who are checking people in.
So, we will have us a concise ordinance that will eliminate or help eliminate, reduce the impact of crime and other negative activities in that particular environment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's please... If not, let's please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item forty-seven was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Item number forty-seven. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you. If I could have someone who can come forth, I guess, from LAPD. What we have before us is, is the opportunity to accept a grant, which is good. I like it when California and/or Los Angeles gets some money from the federal government. We're at a deficit in that we send more money than we get back. But in this particular case, my main question was to you is to please share with us what, what this grant would entail, as far as what activity would ensue once we get this grant.
Lieutenant Bob Nirmey, LAPD Juvenile Division. What the grant entails is it's a partial payment for the salary of one officer, approximately seventy percent of her, her salary. They teach the GREAT program. The GREAT program is thirteen one-hour presentations that has to do with basically how to resist gangs. It's currently taught at Mulholland Junior High. Per school year, we teach about seven, or instruct about seven hundred students on that part. The, the rest of the funds go for some equipment, which involves a graduation ceremony, is repurchase of laptop to keep track of the, of the students and the grades and so forth, some T-shirts, some giveaways, and then there's a, I believe, a two thousand dollar training thing that's required annually to recertify the instructor.
At Mulholland Middle School, what, is that one of our more troubled middle schools? I mean, we have a high number of kids who have probation officers or something. What's Mulholland like? Can you please describe the makeup of that middle school?
Actually, Mulholland has, is also the site of the Los Angeles Police Magnet School Program, dating back several years. It was instituted because it was a feeder school to one of the senior high schools that we're involved in. The population, or the ethnic break-out, it's a, I believe it's forty, fifty percent Hispanic, with the rest being Asian and Caucasian. And that goes back to two thousand and one, and it's been in place in that particular school. I know you like the federal money, so this year, we've upped the, for the coming school year, we've asked for a larger grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would expand the program, the same program into a number of other schools, a number of other junior highs throughout the city. And the senior schools would be, that are, senior high schools that involve are San Pedro, Dorsey, Wilson, Monroe, and Reseda. And we would institute the program in the feeder, in the feeder junior highs to those schools.
So, is, is Mulholland one of our schools that we have a higher concentration of kids who are already in trouble, or is this totally front-end prevention?
No, this is front-end here. There, there was no, Mulholland is actually, have been there. It's a very nice school. There are far more troubled schools in the city than, than Mulholland.
So, how did we come up with Mulholland way back in, what, two thousand, ninety-nine?
Something like that. Only because it was a feeder school into the senior high school, and they, I believe the LA Unified recommended that school that we start, that we start the program in, and it was, and the program is most effective dealing with twelve to fourteen-year-olds. So, to answer your question, it was just selected. I don't think there was any kind of, it was selected by LA Unified.
Selected by LA Unified. Okay, but now, how do you measure your outcomes on this program? How do you measure your success? Is, with this grant, does it require a report?
We do, we do do an annual report. However, I know you and I have had some meetings prior to this on how do we judge the success of a particular program. And that report that has not made it over to your office yet, there are two tracking systems. One is done by LA Unified, which tracks the students who have had the program, and they, on the average, have, on the average, have better grades, fewer lates, fewer fights, fewer discipline problems than children, or students that have not had the program. And we've been in place, we've done about thirty-five hundred children so far. LA Unified keeps, keeps track of all those students until they graduate from the twelfth grade. A separate tracking system is done by the federal, by the US Government Department of Justice. They track the entire grade program, because it's, because it's theirs, and they have, they have similar outcomes on their test scores.
So, we, the city of Los Angeles, your department, doesn't get involved in outcome measurement? You just look at the measurements and the outcomes that are passed on to you from LAUSD?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there anything that you think we could add to that evaluation, or they're doing all that needs to be done?
Actually, the, the one officer that teaches the program is virtually a member of the staff, and there are no other police resources devoted to that except that one officer. The LA Unified does have their, like I said, their own tracking system, and we rely on those. We don't have a separate tracking system.
Okay. So, basically, through LAUSD's evaluation, we're keeping up with the requirement as far as the grant goes?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Seeing none, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. And the next item, please.
Item fifty-one was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item number fifty-one.
Thank you, colleagues. I first want to thank our Chair, Tony Cardenas, for working with me and trying to pound out a policy, an approach that begins to give real meaning to a youth adult apprentice program. Yesterday, we talked about the ADHOC Committee on Gangs and how we're trying to create intervention. One of the core components of making a difference in the streets is our ability to create jobs. Last year, I believe, we were up to one-quarter of a billion dollars in capital improvement contracts, one-quarter of a billion in capital improvement contracts. Of those funds, very, very small percentage actually gets recycled into the city in a manner in which we can create jobs in our communities. It is not part of the culture, it's not part of the methodology, it's considered more as a marketing strategy, it's a public relations strategy, it's an afterthought. If, as a city, we're going to make real changes in creating opportunities for our youth, we should be looking at our own resources, restructure, how we look at this issue of leveraging, and literally put on the table the same value and emphasis that we do to those programs, we create minority women opportunities. In this regard, we would be focusing on how we create jobs for youth. So, imagine every component, every contract in this city that has an element of youth hiring, we will be sending a strong signal to those thousands of young people who do not have jobs, who do not have choices, a distinct possibility of changing their lifestyle, because they have built up their self-esteem, they are able to bring home a check and make change in their own city. This is a culture that needs to change in making sure we provide the kind of focus, the kind of emphasis in our youth by putting our money where our mouth is. So, I introduced this back in two thousand and three. Then Chairman Martin Lalo started the process. Thanks to Councilmember Cardenas, we were able to get some strong traction, got some feedback, and there's language here that I can accommodate. Want to invite our Commissioner from Public Works, please come on for her, Mr. David Sickler, and Mr. Zines, who's been working on this issue. And again, I know my time's expired, but I just want to ask one question.
You have six minutes, actually, so don't worry.
Oh, great.
As the first speaker.
Do we have, can you give me your feedback on how you view this effort and its significance in terms of how we change the culture within not only Public Works, but within the city in hiring youth?
Please hold my time.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this subject. This was an issue I worked on in my previous occupation. And there are a number of tools to use here in the city. I've talked to the mayor at length about this. I've asked our Director of Contract Administration, John Reamer, to take the lead on this. He is very excited about and enthusiastic about working on this project. Contract Administration feels that they can make this work. I've had exciting discussions with the We Build Program under LA Unified School District, which has a fifty percent local hire requirement, and their numbers are phenomenal. They're having, for example, within the African-American community alone, a twenty-three percent graduation rate. We have the Century Project, we have the City SNAP Project. So, there are a number of tools out there. It's a matter of us connecting the dots, bringing them together, in my opinion, making it a requirement for the contractors of this city to hire young adults, and then bridging them in to apprenticeship programs, because it's not just enough to give these kids a job. We've got to get them on the path for a career, a career that brings them a good income with benefits and a future. If we're going to be effective at all in keeping kids away from gangs, then we've got to give them some hope. And right now, I'm sure most of you in this room know that it now costs the taxpayers about sixty-five thousand dollars a year to house a young person in prison. And once we lose them in prison, we basically handicap these kids for life. It's very difficult for them to undo what's, what's happened in their history and their, in their past, when it comes to getting future employment for them. So, I'm very excited about making this work. I've had discussions, as the mayor has, with our building trade unions. They're excited about helping us with this project as well. So, we're going to be pulling together a special meeting of all the building trades, sometime, depending on the mayor's schedule, sometime end of April, first of May, so we can actually formulate a front, a united front on this issue.
Commissioner, thank you for your hard work. Want to thank Deputy Mayor Larry Frank for coming to the commission meeting, to the committee meeting, and speak with passion the possibility, the potential, and the neglect we've had in the past, how we can correct that focus and literally change the culture and the bureaucracy and how they view this particular issue and the difference we can make. Mr. Zines, again, hold my time. In terms of implementation, from CDD's point of view, having the skeleton, if you will, can you speak to us about how comfortable and how proactive we can be if we're given this opportunity?
Councilmember Reyes, before I speak to that point, I really would like to thank you and Councilman Cardenas for pushing this issue. As you know, we've been working on this issue from CDD for many years. We are very comfortable in not just mobilizing our internal department resources, but really being a leader within the city family, working with Commissioner Sickler and other departments. There's, one of the recommendations is establishment of a work group under the leadership of the mayor's office, to bring all of our departments together to discuss the implementation. Much of what was presented today can be done by an executive order, much of it can be done by, or is, will be done by established city policy. I do believe we'll be able to implement this in the first part of the fiscal year and phase it in as we gain experience. I do believe we are drastically changing how we are dealing with youth employment. I think the city will continue to establish itself as a leader in the nation on this issue. I do believe that will create thousands of new, good-paying, living-wage job opportunities for our young people within the city of Los Angeles.
Zines, again, thank you for your hard work. You have not given up. It's been three years in the making, and we've stayed, we've stayed focused on this. We're reaching another threshold. Colleagues, when you look at Department of Water and Power, the harbor, we look at all those skill sets that we need to cultivate, because the school district is, no longer has metal shop, no longer has carpentry, no longer has basic trade skill development. These apprentices become that much more important for our future labor base, especially when we talk about how a city functions, all the integral pieces that allows electricity to flow, our sewers to flow, our actual operation of our mechanical, excuse that pun, mechanical issues that we have that truly require these kinds of skill sets. I also know that we are, we want to connect with the unions, make sure the Personnel Department, along with the unions and all of the other interest groups that promote skill set development for our youth, is actually being coordinated, so that we can have an approach that is complementary and not divisive. So, with that, colleagues, I encourage your vote. Want to thank Councilmember Cardenas and chairmanship of the ADHOC Gang Committee for working with me. And again, this has the potential of creating the core element in our intervention, our gang youth issues, and addresses the needs of all youth, whether you're in a gang or not. We need to provide youth the opportunity to have a job and build up their self-esteem. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenthal, to be followed by Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of the joys I have of being an elected official, is actually to come in as this process was winding up and being able to vote in favor of it on both the Gang Committee and the Public Works, which I'm now Chair of. Many of you know I carry a coffee cup that says "homeboy" on it, and what this basically means is a job. Giving a young person a job is probably, next to education and a nurturing family environment, the most critical thing we can do. A job gives self-esteem, a job gives hope, a job gives dignity, a job fills your day with positive productive opportunities. So, this is terrific. I mean, it's a no-brainer, and I'm sure we'll unanimously support this. I'd just like to get your understanding of what we do next after we pass this motion, what the timeframe is. My colleague, Ed Reyes, or one of you said thousands of jobs. Just tell me what your visions are of where this will take us, both of you.
Well, I think the next step is to put Contract Administration to work, because they're the folks that are actually out there turning the knobs and the wheels every single day on the ground level, and they really have the expertise to make this work.
On, on the issue of the first, the vocational worker and officer, and office trainees, you'll have an opportunity through your budget process to work with individual departments to actually establish real, live positions that departments could hire into. That is one of the most immediate next steps. The second is working with Contract Administration on the implementation side with the contractors. We also have a huge system of our work source system and our one-source system, our private contractors, who will be actually filling the pools of applicants, and we'll immediately be working with them to implement this program.
And as you implement the program, will there be a mentoring arm in this? Will there, will there be some kind of follow-through with these young people, some kind of supervision, support, nurturing that helps them through?
Yes, sir. And thank you for bringing that point up. One of the requirements that we're going to be making is that all of the applicants, or the vast majority of applicants, I should say, will be coming through one of our training programs. So, automatically, they'll be connected to the case management, they'll be connected, as you came out to, to the UCLA's One Source Center out in your district.
That's right.
They'll be connected to those hard-working people as they come into the program. The expectation is that they will stay with them through the placement.
Now, what do you look at in the initial screening interview with these young people in terms of placement?
You know, young people in our city really do get a bum rap. Oftentimes, folks exploit our young people, and as they call us, the gang capital of the world. You know, my fifteen years of experience of working in low-income communities, the vast majority of young people are good, honest, hard-working youngsters that just need the opportunity, they have the capacity and capabilities. So, one of the things that we really screen for is what is their desire, and what do they see, what do they envision for themselves? And oftentimes, we don't ask the young people, what do they see themselves being? Oftentimes, we want to characterize them, well, if you're a low-income kid coming up on the projects, you must be a gang member, you must be this. So, we, we really screen for desire first. And if kids don't know what they want to be, that's where we step in and say, this is what you can be, this is what you should be. The second thing is school and their educational status. You know, last week, we sponsored a conference that had, on dropouts, which many of you have supported and spoke at, at the conference, fifty percent of our folks from LA Unified are dropouts. So, many of the kids that we outreach to are kids who have not completed their high school diploma, and we try to find the right training program, the right GED program, the right educational program to get at least their high school diploma, and hopefully more, going on to two-year or four-year universities. The third thing that we really... The third thing that we really do talk to them about is the issue of drugs and the screening that almost every employer now screens for drugs. And oftentimes, if kids are using, we try to get a process to get them off and for them to be aware before they make the applications not to, or to be aware that all employers screen for substance abuse.
Just to add to that, the lure, of course, is having steady income, some income that they can rely on. In that process, that 10 to 12 week of what we call pre-apprenticeship training, we start to instill what we call soft skills in these kids, the basic things of learning discipline in order to keep a job. So we make sure that they understand those very basic, those very basic rules. In that process, they start to learn better, new, healthy habits. It's a great process.
This is all excellent, what I'm hearing. Let me ask you this. What if a young person, as part of the youth process, ends up in some kind of a criminal justice situation, where we know the numbers are staggering of young people who go through the criminal justice system, and they get stamped with a felony for maybe it was something to do with drugs as part of what they were going through? You talked about cleaning up your rack before you go for a job interview, and all of that makes a lot of sense. What about a person, young person, who has a felony?
Just a quick stat. In LA County, they process about 32 juvenile minors through the LA County Probation Department for arrests. About 50% of those are within the city limits. The vast majority of them are felony arrests, so that population is fairly large. We actually have one small program right now that takes kids directly from the probation camps into our work source system. And we've been working over the last two years to integrate that, that any kid coming that who's an LA city resident and is eligible to work could go directly into our, one of our programs. Then we work with the employers and the private employers in particular for the opportunities. And what we try to be able is to repackage the kid, from a kid who's walking in with a felony stamped across their forehead, to a kid who has positive attributes and positive paper, as we call it, when they walk in the door.
So in other words, you're not going to let the felony get in the way of giving that young person opportunities?
No, and just to add to that, where the building trades actually recruit for apprenticeship, they work with the justice system. To recruit for these young kids that they think have potential to turn around, they actually go out and recruit to bring some of these young people in and retrain them and get them ready for a skill.
Excellent. Well, this is terrific to hear, because obviously, give young people opportunities, no matter what the story is, and if they come to that realization and we nurture them through the process, we've done a terrific thing. Because one of you said, what is it, $68,000 a year to incarcerate somebody?
$65,000 a year.
$65,000. So would you keep us posted, like every few months, let us know how it's going?
Our pleasure. Thank you. This will work.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange, to be followed by Mr. Cardenas.
That's why he, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Robert, thank you very much for your work on this here. Commissioner, thank you. It's so important. Again, Ed made some very good points about all these various jobs that are there, and as Mr. Rosendahl spoke of. I want to know, who's your best contact in the community college district?
Actually, Chancellor Young, Rocky Young, has actually adopted.
And who's your best contacted personnel?
Actually, Margie Wieland has assigned Miss Sosa and John Leland.
Put the team together, because this is it. You know, when Councilmember Weston spoke earlier and addressed Bill Fujoke about the Cedar Program, you know, I was a Saturday Skills class at 450 North Grand, and Santiago Jackson was my instructor, and he is still working as a superintendent in Los Angeles. I don't know if you worked with.
He's our partner.
Yeah, he's your partner. So you've got all the right people, and just make it. And also, I think, very passionately, Mr. Rosendahl, as you spoke there, if you focus on some areas, because I think we could get overwhelmed in Los Angeles, if you focus on a cluster of schools and partnered with a community college, whether it's Trade Tech, whether it's Mission, whether it's Harbor, whatever the case, I know if Janice Hahn was here, she'd talk about Harbor College, because all those great jobs down in the Harbor that we should connect Los Angeles people to. So tie that all together, and Chancellor Young is very interested in this too, and getting Water and Power, and as, also as Bill said, and I know Ed's very happy, because Friday mornings are groundbreaking for homeboy industries right on North Spring Street. There's nothing like, stops a bullet like a job. What a motto there. But just the self-worth of having a job, and you start one place and you get another place. It's not the last place you're going to work, you know, and you can learn a lot in that. So anything I could personally do to help, and I know Mr. Garcetti's talked about this a lot with the studios and this apprenticeship and looking at it, let's look at other areas where we can march out, and also hold them accountable, the young people. And if you show up, that's why I talked earlier about, you know, school starts too early sometimes. You know, I mean, if school started at 8:30 instead of 7:30, maybe people could get there on time, you know, just like a job on time. You get basic talent and skill from some of that discipline that goes with that established form and later on is a benefit to the, for the job. Thank you all for calling me if I could help you. Commissioner, thank you, and it's wonderful too, with your background, and now a Public Works Commissioner, you could add to that, you know, and nurture this. Thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas, thank you for letting me slide in front of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and then Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. We all know how important it is for us to follow through with these youngsters. I mean, just earlier, you heard that Mr. Wezar was part of a program, you heard that Mr. Weston was part of a program, I was part of a program, and we didn't follow through with us, because we ended up being lawyers and politicians. We've got to make sure that we get these kids into good trades. So my question to you is, how are we tracking these kids? How are we making sure that they don't just spend a summer and say, wow, that was the best summer of my life two years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago? How do we make sure that they actually get an opportunity, if they are skilled, if they do want to follow up in that profession, that they actually have an open door and an opportunity to become a well-paid individual and someone who actually is willing to say, I'm willing to do my job and learn these skills so that I can have a career?
Actually, in the department, we have two major tracking systems. One of them is called ISIS that tracks to the individual as they come in. It's a case management and database system, so we know who these individuals are. The second is that we actually have a system to track the jobs and the job match. So we'll be able to see and report back, and we need to report back, on how we are doing between the number of jobs that have been available and the number of placements, and we'll be able to report that.
So we've been doing that already?
Yes. On a small scale, where we've been doing the city jobs and the SNAP and the universe there in total is about 600, we do have that information. Personnel Department has actually been.
So you've been tracking Mr. Weston, Mr. Wezar, and myself?
No, we didn't go back that far. I would say we go back two years.
My time, please. Go ahead. My question is, how long have you been tracking that?
It's been about two and a half years.
Oh, two and a half years. Okay, we went through the program just.
Just a little bit.
We just missed that. But one of the next questions I needed to clarify on behalf of the council and the commission, in the committee, the word instruct, the commission was used, and in the subsequent committee that it went through, that was changed to encourage or support. Can we clarify if the city attorney's here, or do you feel comfortable with what you heard in committee, to know why we changed that and how we should handle that in the future? My time, please.
Well, the recommendation that we have is on number three, change the wording to request the Board of Public Works to include a young adult hiring preference in all of its contracts, instead of the wording request for proposals. And the reason we're doing this is to close all the loopholes, that everybody, it's even across the board, that's what, that's what the requirement is for everybody that wants to do business.
It's stronger language and more accurate with the spirit of what we'd like to see the results.
And it allows contract administration to enforce it.
So we don't want to just feel good about our intention, we want to make sure that there's some follow-through and that there's actual action, and then we actually start seeing the numbers grow of the number of young people that are actually engaged in these kinds of activities, these jobs that hopefully will result in permanent employment down the road?
No, because if we just suggest it, we're going to get too many people, they just won't do it.
So it is stronger and is more appropriate language?
That's correct.
Okay. Because my notes here show that the word instruct was used, and that from the city attorney's vantage point was not the right word to use, because of the purview and authority of the commission and the purview and authority of the council. Even though we're of like mind, we do have our own responsibilities and the way in which we respond to each other's requests, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, so then in the future, then when we have, go ahead.
If I could interject, because the Board of Public Works is council-controlled, instruct would be an appropriate term.
Well, it would.
Yes.
Then, not at this time, not on this issue, but it'd be good to have that discussion again, because I was told from my notes that the word instruct was inappropriate. But that's okay, it has nothing to do with the kids, I just thought it was an opportunity to bring it up right now, because it was brought up on this matter. That's okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. I actually had the same concerns as Councilmember Cardenas. Commissioner, thank you for bringing up the example at LAUSD. You know, there, they told us, when we first were thinking about doing this, to getting our local residents or students involved in the largest public works program in the country, saying, here we have this large, huge unemployment rate around these local neighborhoods where we're building all these schools, and let's make sure they have jobs on these school sites, and we created the 50% local worker participation goal, and it's done tremendous things. But it only worked because we didn't only have lofty goals and ideas, but we actually had some real mechanisms to make that happen with partnerships of the stakeholders involved. And as you described the program, we have our adult ed schools who provide the training, put them into our union apprenticeship programs, and then straight to the job, and it's had tremendous success, as you mentioned. And I had a similar question as Councilmember Cardenas, in that, I mean, are we mandating this, or do we have, I didn't quite listen, the language that we're using in the contracts or anything else to assure that we use these youngsters? In your view, is that sufficient? Should we be stronger? Because if you get the sense from the council, I mean, from those who have spoken, we're very supportive of this and want to really make it work and expand it, this is a very simple solution. I mean, it's hard work to make it happen, but we've got to be more creative in making things like this happen for our youngsters in our community. So do you think it's strong enough, or do we need to do more to make sure it happens?
Well, I would have to defer to our attorneys and our departments, because I've only been here since August 11th, so I'm sure no expert on the machinery of how things work here. But as far as I'm concerned, it should be mandated. If I had my preference, it would absolutely be mandated. Nobody's going to be able to convince me that with a 25% unemployment rate of our young people, 16 to 24 years old, we can't find enough people to put to work.
And in the language right now, is it mandated or?
I'm sorry. As I read number three, if we require young adult hiring, as we do in minority hiring, that's pretty much of a mandate. And then that's up to contract administration to weigh. I mean, we first and foremost have to get the work done for the city, and there are going to be instances where there are going to be particular jobs, instances of work to be done, where they may not be able to come up with a particular level of young adults. I believe we have the option now to adjust to that. We're going to have to make some adjustments on federal grants as well. But I've talked to John Reamer, Director of Contract Administration, who's also been in contact with Bureau of Engineering. We feel we can work around all of that.
Okay. Now, my final question is, what are, can you describe again, just so that we're very clear, what are we targeting with what's before this council today, and what more can we be doing to expand what we're doing today?
Councilman, there's actually seven various, seven recommendations that address various issues. The number one is to utilize a mechanism the city already has for the vocational workers and office trainees. Right now, that's really an issue that should be dealt with during the budget process. These positions are generated by the Personnel Department, that any city department can use to hire a young person, and SEIU 347, that S. Sanchez successfully implemented this with us on the city jobs program, where we are able to bring young people into the city family and hired full-time with full benefits, and they transition into the city civil service, and they could bridge over. That's a tremendous mechanism for the city, as one of the largest employers in the region, and I believe one of the largest employers in the city, can do its share of hiring its own young people. The second is a policy of first-source hiring, that all of our contracts and our major economic development projects, like Grand Avenue, that's coming before you, that you mandate that they actually use local hiring and our work source and one-source centers to, for new employees. This will specifically target the young adults population, but I believe coming later will be a more stronger policy on that.
And what I'm getting at, is there anything, if you feel the support from this council, anything else that you think we should be doing to really support long-term thinking about what this is? This is kind of like the beginning steps of it. So what, anything else you think we should be doing here that?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, but I do think this is a major step forward, and I do have to really say that by adopting this, we are really changing the face of young adults' employment policies within the city. It just radically changes it.
And finally, reporting mechanisms, are we going to, is there something in here that we'll be able to see, a committee for council or council that will?
We really hope that Councilman Cardenas will continue to hold our feet to the fire through the Ad Hoc Committee, with quarterly reports back, both on the implementation. We do have to come back to you with the implementation status and policies with that. The second issue, if I might add, and Councilman Garcetti has been leading this charge, is really the federal non-support for young people within this country. They have taken programs like the Impacts Your District, the Youth Opportunity Program, and have completely eliminated that, and have reduced funds for our youth WIA programs, youth offender programs and others. It's about 50% less dollars that we have now than we had four years ago, and I think that's something that this council and the mayor's office should lead a national charge for a national reinvestment for these young people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. We have Mr. Reyes for a second time, and then Mr. Cardenas for a second time as well.
Thank you, Council President. To reinforce that this is not just a gesture and afterthought, that this truly is a core change in how the city functions, I'd like to amend that we go back to the original term. We've gone from encouraged to requests to instructs. We were told we couldn't use instruct, to use requests, but speaking to the city attorney, it is our ability as an institution, as a body, to use instructs. By using instructs, it sends a strong message that this is the way business has to be done in the city, because it is embracing the needs of our youth and is diverting resources and recycling back into our communities. And with that spirit also, I'd like to, another friendly amendment, that in number three on the Public Works report, instead of just isolating requests for proposals, to actually insert contracts. So every contract that goes through Public Works actually has that particular requirement, and begins to actually send a stream of resources back in the context of youth development, youth jobs, and making it very real as an apprentice program. So those will be my two friendly amendments. Can I have a second on that? Thank you, committee chair, and that would be the action of today. And again, I thank you so much. This did not happen overnight, this is three years in the working, we finally got here. The timing is important, given the discussion of the Ad Hoc Committee. The timing is important. We look at the $69 billion of our federal funds going to a war everyone's questioning, and eliminating many, many programs that would have given our youth an opportunity, and it sends a clear message to our youth that they do matter, that someone does care, and there is a future for them. They do not need to submit themselves or get pulled into the gang culture. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reyes, for that amendment, because I do think it's important that we understand, and this is a civics lesson, in the differences between who you elect, what you elect them to, and then once they get elected, we get sworn to uphold the Constitution, et cetera, and the Charter, and within those documents, therein lies our outline of responsibilities. And some people might think, well, what are you making a big deal about instruct or request or what have you? The problem with using requests based on a legal opinion, that apparently, the latest report to this council is that that opinion was an error, and instruct is allowed and appropriate. It's important that we insert the. It's important that we insert the word instruct, as Mr. Reyes said, because it is stronger language, it is appropriate language, and more importantly, it does in fact give the message that Mr. Reyes just said, that it is part of what this institution wants and expects, not just the board, but the council as well. And that's very important for people to understand. And one thing that people get comfortable with, and we need to make sure that we understand our responsibilities, whatever body or group we're a member of, is that we might have custom in practice, and people might say, well, that's the way it's always been done. But if somebody says, but this time I want to do it to our fullest abilities and responsibilities, therein lies the real quest for all of us, to hold ourselves accountable, to hold ourselves responsible. Because, for example, when all of us got elected to the city council, each one of us got sworn in, and we gave our oath, and this, and this word of instruct is a perfect example of what that responsibility is. And on a lighter note, I did learn how to paint in that summer program, and my wife can attest to you more often than I care to, I'm a pretty darn good painter. So it was not all for naught. I did end up being a politician. I had a much more noble cause. I was an engineer at one time, actually got hired as an engineer. But I think that these programs work, and we should not allow ourselves, to use one isolated example, to say that the kids don't follow through and get these jobs. They will follow through and get these jobs. These are wonderful, skilled opportunities. Too many of our Angelino children and families are not involved in this city structure, in the structure of all of these big corporations who have tens of millions of dollars, or even hundreds of millions of dollars, in contracts with the city. They should share in that bounty and that opportunity, just like the biggest corporations do. So do the youngest in our community, and so do their families and their future families. So thank you for your hard work, and you better believe we're going to hold your feet to the fire and make sure that we follow through with this and we make it real, by the dozens, by the hundreds, and eventually the thousands. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for this action, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And then Mr. Rosendahl is our final speaker.
Yeah, I just want to correct Mr. Cardenas when he said, a much more noble profession as an engineer. This is the most noble profession, because frankly, we're the ones on the firing line, and we're the ones that represent the people. And to represent the people couldn't be a better job than anything else, to serve under the people. But I just want to go on record, I'm Chair of Public Works, okay? And this is a major issue with us. I frankly don't like the word request, because it doesn't give the oomph that instruct does. I'm not a lawyer. We don't even have our own lawyers at the CLA's office, which I hope we do in the new budget process, so that we can have our own representation. I hope we're doing legally the right thing, but it's what we want, which is to accomplish a project. We want young people to have job opportunities. We want them nurtured and mentored, and we want them to be productive members of society. So, we're not requesting, we're instructing that this get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. That is our final speaker. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item 53 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, we have now item 53 before us. I'd like to invite Sylvia Hawkins forward to give testimony for two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. As your president, Sylvia Hawkins, on number 53, I'd like to address this to Chief Bratton. Plan of a raise for Los Angeles Police Department officials so that they can live in the valley in San Gabel will not work. Mayor Vargas and Chief Bratton know about the plan of RIT Housing Authority to destroy Los Angeles Housing Authority Section 8 program. The social security plan of all off to work a business job to qualify for RIT Housing Authority didn't work. It's all and ripped off by Bishop Charles Blake and Councilman Lamar to get you to work off of social security to give you a housing of RIT when they are knowing they are the ones that are ruling the jobs and the timing of layoffs, so that they can get back to housing. All business jobs are controlled by fake bishops and real estate owners to get their money back, and you kicked off of their apartment, and you kicked out of their apartment, which is once you apply for RIT, RIT housing, and now off of social security. Same as healthcare insurance card with all businesses. You will pay at least 80% of all bills. The idea here is Jordan Lee, Social Security for RIT Housing or insurance companies. We're asking Los Angeles Police Department to make another plan if 40,000 to 50,000 a year is not enough money.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your thoughts on the property at 452 West 109th Street. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 61 was called special by Councilmember Reyes, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Okay. We've had public comment on this already?
Public hearing was held in committee, yes.
Okay. There are cards. It will require a motion from a member of the council to open a public hearing on this. Mr. Reyes, do?
Yes, I'd like to move for public hearing. We have a group of folks that have been waiting here all morning. We'll move for 10 minutes. Appreciate that very much.
Okay, we've got eight cards. We're going to set the clock to two, up to two minutes apiece, but know that if the first five take all two minutes, then we'll get to five out of the eight speakers. So we'll set overall 10 minutes of public comment and up to two minutes a person. And the first card is the Very Reverend Ernesto Medina and Mark Callahan.
Council President Garcetti, members of the council, good to be here. Congratulations, Eric. I'd like to introduce Reverend Mark Callahan, who is a bishop's assistant for issues surrounding housing.
Yes, Dear President Garcetti and members of city council, I'm presenting to you a letter from Bishop J. John Bruno, sixth bishop of the Diocese of Los Angeles, regarding his opposition to HR 4437 and supporting Councilman Reyes's resolution to oppose that. Dear President Garcetti and members of city council, I write this letter to you with a heavy heart, because I see a great and irrational fear overtaking our country in relation to the issues surrounding homeland security. And an outcome of this fear is making scapegoats of millions of members of our immigrant population with measures reminiscent of the rounding up of Japanese immigrants in this city during World War II, and of the hatred and blame cast at the Jewish community prior to the horrors of the Holocaust. Dear friends, we pride ourselves with a tradition and history of compassion around the world with those less fortunate than ourselves, and yet within our own borders we contemplate the criminalization of 11 million undocumented workers, classifying them, men, women, children, and seniors, as aggravated felons. Do you realize the implications of this bill? Will also criminalize organizations and individuals assisting undocumented immigrants. The majority of these organizations are churches, synagogues, and mosques, helping our brothers and sisters who have come here from horrible conditions at great risk to make their lives better and to contribute to the fabric-making up the mosaic of this great city of Los Angeles. Immigration reform is needed, but not this bill. Please exercise your responsibility as our elected officials by standing up against this inhumane bill titled HR 4437. Sincerely, J. John Bruno. Thank you.
We have a letter for each of the members of the council and would like to submit the letter for the official record, please.
Great, we'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms gets that from you over here. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Cynthia Valenzuela is our next speaker.
Good morning, members of the council, and thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I'm the Director of Litigation for the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund. And I had prepared comments, oh, thanks. I had prepared comments to state here on the record today, to urge you to support Councilman Reyes's resolution against HR 4437. But I've been notified and given a copy of Councilman Bernard Parks amendments, or suggested amendments to that motion, and I feel compelled to instead spend my time speaking about those. I think that the amendments, some of them are agreeable to Maldef, others of them are not. I think in general, they focus on what the bill focuses on, which are enforcement-only measures that have been in effect since 1992, when Clinton tripled the Border Patrol. It doesn't work. Instead, immigrant crossings have channeled into more remote areas, such as the Arizona Desert, and have subjected immigrants to more, to harsher environmental conditions and even death. It has increased tensions between the US and Mexico, and it's provided a more dangerous and volatile environment for everyone. There are three companion bills in the Senate which focus on enforcement measures, enforcement of the border, and Maldef certainly supports strong enforcement at the border. However, those Senate bills also balance that with recognizing the contributions of the 11 million undocumented immigrants who are here now and who are not going away. And those bills are more balanced bills than this Sensenbrenner bill and the amendments offered by Councilman Parks.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Julio Hiron?
Hiron, Mr. Garcetti.
Hiron. Julio Hiron.
It's a glad and a pleasure to be here. The last time I was here was when President George Walker Bush's birthday was, and I remember that because this code is red and I'm a Republican. And I do not live in this beautiful city, but I work here, so technically I live eight hours of my life on a daily basis. And I'm also proud to be a member of the Minutemen. And it's really, really disrespectful, Mr. Reyes, that you put in your resolution that it will affect the documented or the legal Latinos and non-Latinos here, or the nationals. It's not going to affect it. It is a shame. It is really a shame, Mr. Reyes. And I'm not judging you because you are Latino like I am, or Mr. Cardenas and the other members who are Latinos. I'm really, really disappointed with these kind of actions. It is against the labor laws of the United States of America to hire an illegal immigrant, not an undocumented. That's the wrong term. Este mensaje también se va a repetir en español. Es un desastre, señor Consejal Reyes, que usted venga juntamente con el Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles a crear corrupción política. It is a shame. It is really a shame that the political machinery of the liberal Democratic Party now is saying on this resolution, you tell me, Mr. Reyes, how it's going to be affecting me, HR 4437, to us, the legal Latinos in the United States who are respecting and abide every single law in the United States? How is it going to affect us? Now, we expect that tomorrow, Mr. Reyes and members of this wonderful council, including Mr. La Bonch, and I remember from the MTR Board of Directors, and Mr. Parks is sitting on that board too, that tomorrow Senator Arlen Specter will present again the mark. The mark is what President Bush is asking, a guest worker program, which is the more reasonable thing to do, a guest worker program. No more amnesty and just more power to the Latinos who are here legally, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Our next speaker is Angela Zambrano. Just remind everybody that we have two minutes apiece. Thank you.
Good morning, President Garcetti and members of the council. My name is Angela Zambrano. I'm the executive director of Caresen, and Caresen's been serving the community for over 23 years. We're at Hoover and 7th. I am here today together with members of the community to urge you to support the motion presented by Mr. Reyes to oppose HR 4437. If you recall, about a month ago, we presented over 10,000 signatures that were gathered in 10 days from all of your districts. So we're going to be watching very closely the vote. This bill, as it was mentioned, it criminalizes hard-working undocumented immigrants and their families, and even if their families are documented. Any individual who assists them, citizens, regardless of their status, including priests, and that's why Cardinal Mahoney came out basically saying that if this law passes, the churches will not abide by this law. Doctors, nurses, teachers, and social workers will also be, and employers would also be criminalized if they assist undocumented workers. The police will be converted into federal agents. I want to emphasize that HR 4437 will go against longstanding policy of the city regarded Special Order 40. So it is bad policy not only for Los Angeles, but the state of California and the nation. It is critical that Congress hears loud and clear that the city of Los Angeles opposes HR 4437, that what we need is comprehensive immigration reform that unites our families and reflects the tradition, long tradition of a country of immigrants. Gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, thank you very much, Sandra Gonzalez Castro.
She's leaving.
Okay, she's not here. Russell Hadigri?
Good morning, members of the city council. I'm here on behalf of the Mexican-American Bar Association. We are in support of Councilman Reyes's resolution. And I also, we also concur with our colleague from Maldef. We do believe that any amendment that encourages any more law enforcement will result in, unnecessarily result in confusion and tension and deter, rather than encourage, police and community cooperation. So once again, we're just here to support the resolution by Councilman Reyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Beatriz Recati. Beatriz?
My name is Beatriz Recati, and I represent the group of Mujeres Unidas. And I'm here to oppose HR 4437. We know that the immigrants, they have helped sustain the economy of instability of this country. Would you please be quiet? You already had your chance. So I'm here again opposing this HR 4437, because not only immigrants have enriched the greatness of this country, but they also enriched it with every contribution that they have been able to do to this great country. So I'm here to oppose it. And, well, you have a great afternoon. Today is National Women's Day, and we are opposing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gloria Saucedo.
Hello. My name is Gloria Saucedo. I'm from the Ciudad Mexicana. And I wanted to know and to tell you especially, Mr. Park, he knows sometimes you cannot control the police officers. We see in Ronald King, right? We see what happened with the soldier, the police shot him. In San Fernando Valley, many policemen, and they are confiscate the green card for the people because they feel they have some power, they can control his actions. And I think so, this is very wrong. I think so that Angelino families, they need to live in freedom, they need to live in happiness, and they need to live in a place they can grow the family. And most of our people here in LA, they are families, they are families who work and pay taxes, they are very proud to be in LA. This is why we are asking you to support, to oppose this bill. This bill is not good for the community, and this bill is going to oppose any grow, a good grow of the families. Please oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker card is Hamid Khan.
Thank you, Councilmember. My name is Hamid Khan. I'm the executive director of South Asian Network, and I'm also with the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. I've come here to applaud this effort to send out a loud message to the rest of the country that Los Angeles would not stand by with this kind of racist attitude that has become so prevalent in this country. I think when we look at these laws, we also need to look at the mentality behind the laws as well. And coming from a community, the South Asian community, that has been under siege, has been profiled, has been victims of hate crimes, has been victims of employment discrimination, we want to send this message. we want to send this message loud and clear. What kind of message do we send to the country where the mentality behind these provisions, and fortunately, some of those provisions were not approved, when they say to deny citizenship to US-born children of undocumented immigrants, when provisions that are recommended to deny entry to pregnant women? So I think on this day, which is International Women's Day, we need to send a loud message. And I also want to add my opposition to Councilmember Park's amendment, that what do you expect from survivors of domestic violence? Because they can't differentiate, you know, between local law enforcement and federal enforcement. Once they see that local law enforcement is involved, you know, then they start comparing them to immigration folks. So I'm here to make a very strong statement that please, you know, please oppose it in this entirety without any amendments, and let us move forward as a great city, which represents one of the highest proportions and percentages of immigrant population. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Khan. We'll turn to Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to ask Councilmember Parks if we can speak to the amendments. I've introduced my motion, my resolution, and it's not clear to me what it does and what it's trying to do.
Okay. On Mr. Reyes's time, please. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, in reviewing the legislation, what I was trying to do is identify, rather than our just merely opposing it, giving some insight as to why we oppose it. There are some issues in here that are very legitimate, homeland security issues. There's some in here that, as written, we should not support. But the only way that we can move forward is to identify them and ask for them to be amended. I have to apologize for some inartful writing, but it was done with two fingers early this morning. But the section that we say that the city should amend are already in the bill that we're saying that are not clear and should not be a part of the current legislation. So it's not saying we should add it. It's already in the bill. And so I don't know what it means...
That's the second section, just to clarify?
Yeah, the second...
That last section, so colleagues, in the amendment, the last section.
Where we said the city should seek amendments to the bill, what we're saying is that's already there. I don't know what it means to expand seizure authority and board control. I can imagine what it means, and it may not be good, but I think we need to know what that means before and get clarification. I don't know what it means to have membership would be, cause you to be inadmissible, or gang membership would cause you to be inadmissible for legal entrance, because I don't know of any other country that captures gang membership except the United States. The other issue is eliminating any appeal rights. I think that's not appropriate, and so we shouldn't support it. This should be amended to reflect that there are appeal rights, that we should not, in the next one, provide local law enforcement approval to enforce federal immigration. That violates Special Order 40 since 1978, and I would be opposed to violating that, nor would I like to see LAPD officers enforcing immigration status laws. But if in the investigation of a criminal offense, such as a felony, it becomes obvious that a person's here illegally, I think they have an obligation to notify immigration. So these are the kinds of things that I thought needed clarity, that by just opposing it blanketly, our input as to the specific sections that are of concern to us do not become part of the discussion. I'm concerned also, and again, I apologize for an error on Bullet Number Two in the first section. It shows that the bill was introduced December 6, 2005, past December 16, in 10 days. That's like light speed. My assumption, by looking at the vote, 239 to 182 in the Congress, gives me an indication that it will probably get passed. If we don't take a time to get our input to basically massage the issues that affect us, we could get a bill that completely alters the way we do policing in the city. It threatens us with financial loss if we don't comply. These are things that I think our input needs to go very specifically as to the elements that offend us, not just to say we oppose it. Because without it, we're just saying it will be passed up or down with no input as to the particular element. The other issue I'm concerned about, and this is a fundamental part of law enforcement, we have no input from LAPD as to what their position is on it. We also know that Dennis Zine will be going to the National League of Cities, the chair of the National Committee on Immigration. These issues will be discussed. So before we move forward and not get our input in, I'm concerned we get imposed upon, we have legislation we don't like, we can't live with, and it alters the way we do business with the threat of losing money. So if you look at the form, is that when we look at the very bottom where cities should seek amendments, these are issues in the law currently that we're saying should be altered, explained, or adjusted so it fits what we believe is more appropriate.
You still have two minutes left if you'd like as our first speaker.
Yes, I, first of all, thank you, Councilmember Parks, for that clarification. Colleagues, because there is so much confusion, because there is so much ambiguity, I believe the motion I present is very clear. The message is very clear. Now, I have a follow-up motion that will be sent to, as outlined by the chairman of that particular committee, to look at and direct the CLA, City Attorney, CDD, LAPD, in response to our action today, what are the consequences, what are the ramifications of our action, so that we're not doing this blindly. So it partially addresses what is being raised as a concern. But to be very clear, to allow that level of ambiguity in the way it's structured on the amendment, I believe takes away from the strong message we, as the second-largest city of this nation, has to make, that this action by Sensenbrenner is one in which comes from a point in time when there's electoral year, and they want to gain votes on the backs of immigrants, at a time when this kind of language emerges from a position of hate, at a time in which they will be creating an environment where those who are in the most vulnerable position will be further penalized. I ask my colleagues to support me on the motion as presented. It gives a clear statement as a resolution, but I did follow up with a motion that tries to break down the consequences, feedback from all the respective departments, because everyone will be affected, CDD, LAPD, all of the other city family members who deal with issues of quality of life, especially when they're impacting whole, I mean, thousands of people in this city. So with that, I urge you to support the original motion.
To clarify, Mr. Reyes, we have this motion, and we stamped it for Budget and Finance and HCD Committee. Would you like to consider this, since it is part of HR 4437? I believe it would be in order to discuss as part of this, if you want to do that. So we can take that as an amendment?
Yes, we can take this amendment, and it tries to address all of these idiosyncrasies. I want to do this responsibly, and I believe it should go to Intergovernmental Affairs as well. Again, just trying to look at these issues for what it is.
Why don't we stamp this then, or consider this, colleagues, you have this before us, but it's 61B before us, and we can determine whether or not we want to pass this, send anything back for further review in IGR, but it seems cogent to what we have before us. So, Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. As chairman of the committee, I'm speaking. First of all, I'd like to know, the committee sent this to the council without recommendation. The council, the committee split one-to-one on the motion by Mr. Reyes, and at the request of Mr. Reyes's staff, instead of continuing the discussion, we passed it forward to the councils so we could have this debate today. Now, taking my hat off and talking as a member of the council, I was the member that voted against the resolution and in favor of the bill. But I said very clearly at that time, there are flaws in this law that need to be addressed. And I thank Mr. Parks for bringing those forward today, because I think it really addressed the inconsistency that are in the law with city policy and how we as a department and LAPD responds to that bill. And so I think it's important for us to look at that issue very closely before we take an action. I think it's appropriate that we put a timeout on this, allow the chief of police to comment on that, because it has very significant structural issues within LAPD about how they will do their job. First and foremost, it violates Special Order 40, and I think that's very critical in this city, that we have made a statement as a city that we were going to tell police officers how they deal with the issue of immigration. Secondly, it would federalize basically our police department. It would federalize them and mandate that they do certain things, and if they don't do it, as Special Order tells them not to do it, then we'd lose federal assistance, and we'd possibly lose any future federal grants dealing with policing. And we're receiving huge, tens of millions of dollars of assistance right now from the government on homeland security issues, in particular, COPS, MOR, and other grants. And so there is too much at stake, I think, to rush to judgment. And I think Mr. Parks's motion today is very wise and timely, that we ask those very specific questions, that we call a timeout until we get these issues resolved, and then discuss in length an amended approach to the federal government, and in particular, allow Mr. Zine, we'll go back this week to the League of Cities, and bring our message to them, which is already pretty much substantiated by the California League of Cities, that there are too many problems with the bill as it exists, and we want amendments. And I think that is the message we need to take back to Washington next week. That is the issue we should state clearly today and send back to Washington as part of our legislative package. So I think a timeout today, Mr. Parks's motion, is very timely and appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was selected by the National League of Cities to chair of the Immigration Task Force, and we have representatives from throughout the country, mayors and council members from throughout the United States that sit on this task force. We are concerned about the bashing of immigrants, not only in Los Angeles, but throughout this country. And the people who sit on this task force with me are representatives of the diverse cultures, the diverse ethnicities of America. It's not a blond-haired, blue-eyed task force. The representatives from Florida, the representatives from the East Coast, the representatives from all across America, from Tennessee, all the representatives have the same concerns that you're hearing voiced here today. They don't want to see the immigrant bashing take place. But at the same time, they want to see some modification. They want to see what is proper, what is going to work, not on a national level, but on a local level, because that's where it ends up. How's it going to work in Los Angeles? How's it going to work in Tennessee? How's it going to work in Boston, Massachusetts? How's it going to work across America? And that's what this task force is designed to do. I've already met with the representative from Maldef. My staff has represented, met with representatives from other groups that represent immigrants in this country. And if we look around this horseshoe, and we look around this chamber, most of us would raise our hand if they say, "Where did your grandparents come from? Did they come over here from another country?" My parents came from the United States, but my grandparents came over on a boat from the Middle East. So I understand what the immigrant population's about. I understand what the American adventure's about. We don't want this to be negative. We want this to be as positive. And it's not only the Latino population, but it's the Middle Eastern population. It's the population from all over the world that comes to America to find the American dream. We are not only focused on law enforcement. I come from a law enforcement background, but we understand this is broader than law enforcement. You can't just say, "LAPD, you're going to go out and enforce immigration laws and have all these bills focus on immigration enforcement." We need to do something that's going to be positive. We know that there are, the lady said 11 million, the last figure I received was 12 million. 12 million. We're going to take a big boat, a big plane, and say, "Okay, people are going to go back to their home countries." We know that's not going to happen. So we need to come up with a plan, and that's what the National League of Cities has done, with all of the other organizations that is represented. And the National League of Cities represents every city across America. So there'll be mayors, there'll be council members, there'll be boards of supervisors members. And I'm very honored to serve as the chair of that, and maybe they selected me because I have a Middle Eastern background, because I understand the different cultures, understand, understand, I understand diversity. And coming from the second-largest city, the Los Angeles, we have a say in this. This procedure, 4437, has a lot of flaws. They're still debating this. And I spoke with representatives from the US Senate yesterday. I represent Los Angeles on that League of Cities, but I also represent a constituency in my community, a Latino community. So everything we put together, and all the issues that we're talking about, are going to be fully hashed out in Washington, DC this Friday and Saturday. We've got 16 hours that we're going to be talking about this. We've already had meetings. We had a phone interview yesterday, a phone conference on this. So we are looking on a national level. And if every city across America comes up with their own version, nothing's going to work. What we are going to bring forward from the National League of Cities is something that will work for Los Angeles and for Tennessee, and no city, to my knowledge, wants their law enforcement officers to become federal immigration agents. We've got enough issues that we need to deal with on a local level that we don't have the resources, we don't have the desire to turn our police officers into immigration agents. The Border Patrol is one issue, local law enforcement's another issue. I met with Sheriff Mike Corona from Orange County. I met with him Saturday and discussed what's happening in Orange County. What we need is this National League of Cities and this Immigration Task Force to come up with something that's going to work. So what I would ask is whatever we say today is not going to have a whole lot of impact on the national issue. What's going to have the impact on the national issue is the task force and the recommendations are going to go to the White House, to Congress, to the United States Senate, and that's what we're going to come up with, a comprehensive plan that's going to work for us. So I just implore my colleagues to say, "I have hopefully the trust and confidence that we are going to do the right thing." You already know my position for four and a half years here. I am not in for immigrant bashing, or for taking Border Patrol, or for fortifying our borders with civilians. That's not what I'm about. That's not what this task force is about. So I would say if we would continue this matter, I understand the sentiments of the issue, I understand the concerns of the issue, but the impact is going to take place in Washington, DC, at the task force of the National League of Cities on immigration reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Mr. President, I'd call the question.
We have a called question. Is there an objection? If there's an objection, let's take a vote on it. This requires a two-thirds vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
That passes. We have the question...
Wait, wait. To call, no, no, no.
To call the question, we can, if somebody was recorded wrong, you can ask...
Yes.
A no vote would have stopped the question from being called, and 11... Mr. Clerk, is that in order? Just, I'm sorry, I just want to get a clarification from the clerk. Once we've passed that, is that something that we can reconsider?
I'd like to move to reconsider.
I can just find out if reconsideration is in order. Some motions we can't actually reconsider, but we'll get a clarification from the clerk if folks will just hold tight for a second.
We're going to leave the form.
It's my understanding that we can't reconsider that, but I may be wrong.
But if we didn't understand... I'd like to continue debate, so what does that get?
We're clarifying. We may not be able to, under the vote that we just took, under our own council rules, unless we suspend the rules, but we'll...
Yeah, I believe...
Mr. City Attorney?
I believe council can reconsider whether to call the question.
Okay. Let's open the roll on reconsideration of calling the question. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay. Let me step back. We will not, we are reconsidering calling the question. We called the question, and that holds, meaning there is no more debate, but there was a move to reconsider that.
A yes vote reopens debate.
No. It reconsider's whether or not to vote on, again, whether we close debate. Is everybody clear about that? So we now have that before us if nobody, so we now can vote again on whether or not to call the question. A yes vote ends debate. A no vote continues debate. You need at least 10 votes, because not...
No, no. No, no.
No?
Just three votes.
Slow down. If, on this one, we have it before us right now, in order to reopen debate...
Yes.
No, no, because we actually, the reconsideration, it was reconsideration of the vote, so it's different than changing the vote. So I want to be very clear about this. And, Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. President, the way the rule is written, it says if, to close debate, if they did not have the opportunity to speak twice, 10 votes are required. It is not debatable, but it can be reconsidered.
So we are just reconsidering that question? So it's still the same vote? A yes vote closes debate. A yes vote closes debate, and there need to be at least 10 members to do so, and a no vote will continue if there are at least three votes.
Ask for a no vote, please.
Okay?
Yes, yes.
And some of the consideration was this is on quorum issues, is my understanding. Please open the roll. Everybody will take a pause. The roll is now open. Please vote. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, six noes.
Okay, that fails. Debate continues, and Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
And my question is, I think what I've heard from the speakers thus far have indicated that no one is happy with the current immigration bill that it is the legislature. There's no disagreement for Mr. Smith, or Mr. Zine, or Mr. Parks. We don't agree with the existing. Why can't we take the vote today that says we don't agree with what is being passed by the, and that message, and go on record saying that, and then take Mr. Reyes's 61B and even Mr. Park's 61A and have that go to committee? But I think the important thing that Mr. Reyes is asking us today and others is to say that there are components in this immigration bill that we strongly disagree with. And that's what we want to do. So, and there may be parts of what Mr. Park says and parts of whatever, you know, that we are going to debate further, but I think, and Mr. Zine said... we are going to debate further, but I think, and Mr. Zine said that, that we don't like the existing bill. And I think we should take the vote today that says that. We have the opportunity, a later date, to talk about the other. So that, that would be why I wanted to have a little bit of further discussion to clarify that, because I think that is something that unanimously agree with in this council. So I would just say that we vote on that today, send 61A and B back to committee for further debate, because there will be debate on the Senate, and have some of the discussions. But, you know, so I don't know if that's an, I think that's just supporting what you did, correct?
Right. I just want us to vote on 61. Let's take 61A and B back to committee. Let's understand what it means, but let's send a resounding message.
That would just, I wanted to say that.
Thank you very much.
Members, members for clarification. Ms. Gruel is making a motion, second by Mr. Reyes, to actually move the CLA's recommendation to oppose the H.R. 4437.
Correct. And to.
And then there will be a separate vote on 61A and B to send those to committee.
Yes.
We can split the vote. Okay. Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Parks.
Yes. Counselor colleagues, we are the second-largest nation in this country. We are a country of immigrants. Our economy depends on international relationships. The gentleman from Wisconsin who's promoting this has no clue what it means to live in an urban center, has, is very short-sighted what this means internationally, let alone what it does to those victims, as been described by our speakers. Victims of domestic violence, the fear of authority, the breakdown of communication. We're going to be giving gangs a stronger reason to be that much more powerful because of the silence in our communities, because of the fear. Let's send a strong message that this city is against this bill. It is unhealthy, it's based on hate, the timing is obvious, electoral politics is dominating, and it has nothing to do with the needs and the realities of our communities in an urban center like Los Angeles, like New York, like Miami. We can go on and on. So I just want to reaffirm what Councilman Gruel had just stated. Let's send a clear message. Let's give Councilman Zine something to take back, say, "This resolution states the City of L.A. is against this act." And let's send back to committee the two motions and talk about what impacts it will have in our departments and our city, and break it down, and let's make informed, educated decisions. I ask for my vote on the original motion.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. As written, I don't agree with the bill. The dilemma I have is, if Mr. Zine goes back to Washington this week, what is he going to oppose? Does he say, "I oppose the bill," and they say what particularly, and he says, "I don't quite know." The only way we're going to be able to give him guidance to negotiate our position is to tell him what the specific issues we disagree with. We don't know that in 61. It just says we oppose the bill. Doesn't say what we oppose, doesn't say what part of it we oppose, it doesn't say what's significant to us. So without that, all we can say is, "We oppose." And we leave here, and we'll cheer, and we'll high-five. And when it's over, he says, "What is it exactly you oppose?" We don't know. Zine has no guidance, we have no guidance, all of us are going to Washington. What do we say is the rule of the body? The other issue for 61B, the way this thing is moving, you could end up with it passed before we get city resources to tell us what the impact is. And so if we want to just let someone else have our destiny, then we will just blindly vote for 61. We will send a clear message on what? That we're opposed to a piece of legislation, that we don't quite understand the issues, and what are the things in there that we would choose to oppose? What are the things we seem to alter, we choose to alter? What are the things we find supportive? That's how legislation is dealt with, in my mind, not that just we say no, and then when they say, "What is it you exactly disagree with?", we then shrug and say, "We don't know." So if we want to say a clear message, it could be resounding, we're opposed to it, but when the negotiation starts in the committees that Mr. Zine is going to be attached to, what does he take his guidance from? We just say, "No, no, no." Is there nothing in it that's salvageable? Is there nothing in it that can be amended? Is there nothing in there that we find acceptable? If that's the case, if there's nothing that is acceptable, then we should vote no for it. If there's something acceptable, and there's other pieces we should amend, there's other people, pieces that we should clearly define as being outside of our interest, then we need to label them in that fashion so that the guidance of those, our people that lobby for us in Washington, those that we pay money to give our point of view, we're giving them no guidance with this vote. We send a clear message to those who say we're opposed to it, but we give no guidance to those who support our effort legislatively to say what direction we're going in. And so what I would like to do is say, if it comes up, a yes or no, I'm sure everybody will vote against it. If it then comes up as we leave this chamber, it says, "What is it you exactly oppose?", I don't know how many people can answer that question. And so if we can't answer it, I don't know what the lobbyists in Washington can do, and I don't know what we could tell Mr. Zine to do, unless we're saying, "Do whatever you choose to do." And so that's the thing that we're looking for, is the guidance as to what's in the legislation that's totally unacceptable, what's livable, what are the things that could be managed? And without that, we just have a resounding no, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. As a, as a point of information, we do before a Washington, D.C. trip, have one more council meeting. Certainly, any position we take today, if there is further nuance, that is something that can be negotiated, discussed within the provisions of the Brown Act between now and Friday. And also, somebody could introduce, could reconsider this item and amend it, just as a point of information. Mr. Weston to be followed by Ms. Gruel and Mr. Zine.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. Maybe I missed something. What is the timing of the vote on this measure in D.C.? When will that occur?
I don't think it's certain. It's in the Judiciary Committee right now, the Senate side.
Senator, perhaps the resident from Maldef can give us some clarity. Do you happen to know, please, can you share some light? Because I know they've been tracking it.
The Sensenbrenner bill is currently sitting with the Senate Judiciary Committee, where three other Senate companion bills, McCain, Kennedy, Cornyn, Kyle, I can't think of the third one, are sitting as well. So if you oppose this bill, it might be that you are in favor of one of those other three bills, which have some of the provisions that Councilman Parks stated he was in favor of, and don't have some of the things that Councilman Parks is opposed to. But those are three separate companion Senate bills. The House Sensenbrenner bill is also pending in the Senate Judiciary Committee at this time, and there is no set timeframe within which it will, which further action will be taken on that bill.
So it is possible that if we send 61A and B back to committee, our feedback could be in timing with the movement of those bills, because no one really knows how fast they're moving.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, for me, I mean, there will be a Los Angeles delegation that leaves Friday or Saturday and will remain in D.C. How long?
With 10 members. They'll be there as late as Wednesday.
And so will there, will action take place between Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday on this?
It's unlikely the vote will happen then, but our conversations with, with members of the Senate.
I say that because if there's not to be an immediate vote, we can vote, sending a message that we have issues with the bill as it's currently written, and then have the time to, to, to vet our concerns and come up with specific language as to the things that we don't, you know, that does not sit well with us. So for me, the key would be trying to get some feel for the timing of the action that would take place in Washington. And I'm still a little unclear on, on that. If we had the answer to that question, then I think it would be a lot easier for, for members to, to, to vote here.
That's why I believe the timing issue is so important, that we send a unified, clear message, and because we don't know how long it'll be in the Judicial Committee, gives us opportunity to break down those issues that have been raised. I really don't know.
Can I ask you to press your button again, Mr. Reyes? I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, and Ms. Perry have both, all three pressed their buttons for the first time. And I have Gruel, Zine, and Reyes. Gruel and Zine, second time, Reyes, third time. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I mean, I just, Mr. Weston outlined it just perfectly, and it's what's been, people have been mentioning, is, you know, let's do 61, send a message that, as written, we don't agree with this. Come back, look at 1, 61A and 61B, discuss what we like and do not like, and then there's going to be enough time for us to get that message over to our delegation going to Washington, D.C. And I think that's a great, good process to go, because as we're hearing the immigration debate in Washington, D.C., it's so convoluted over there. There's just stuff coming out of everywhere, and there's no comprehensive policy right now on what they're doing, or no clear direction. Now, if we, if we do not allow, or we do not send a strong message here, and we allow this to go forward without, without, without us giving our input, it's going to allow something like this, that has a number of bad things in it, to continue going forward. And I'm very afraid if these things do go forward. So before we get on that track, we got to stop it now and say where the City of Los Angeles stands. In terms of logistics, it does make sense to me to do 61 today, send that message as written, do 61A and B, and have enough time to discuss that so that we give our Washington delegation some direction. And, and when I say that we should stand up and say, give a very strong message today, I, I said from personal experience. I'm actually an immigrant myself. And when I look at the language that's in here, and I think of what my family members will have to go through, the fear they're going to have to live through if something is allowed to go through like, like this, it's going to create a huge human toll and a huge impact on this city. And my relatives are going to be asking me, "Jose, is the City of Los Angeles here to protect all of us, or just some of us?" And I think we're here to protect all of us, and not just some of us, and not based on whether we have an accent, and not based on whether we look foreign. We welcome everyone here in the City of Los Angeles, irrespective of whether they do have an accent, or irrespective of how they look. Legislation here is going to ask our officers to raise those suspicions just based on people's appearance and the way they talk. And that's not something the city council wants to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
How many on the queue? I want to, I just got handed something to read. How many on the queue, Mr. President?
We've got four other people on the queue.
Yeah, can I just hold, because I want to read what I just said?
Sure. We'll go to Ms. Perry.
I, Mr., thanks, Mr. President. I have a question for Mr. Zine, if he could come to the mic. He has a committee through the National League of Cities, and he is the chair. And so as such, I'm assuming you administer the agenda and the votes taken. Do you absolutely need some position from us to be able to conduct your committee duties?
It's not necessary. And I'll tell you why it's not necessary, because the sentiments reflected here are the sentiments reflected on this task force, from the folks, Florida, to New York, to the West Coast, Middle America. You've got people in elective office, and everyone on this task force is in elective office, either a mayor, a council member, a board supervisor member, they all have that same agenda to try and help their communities. And that's the issue that we're dealing with on a grassroots in National League of Cities versus the Washington bureaucrats that deal with something that's oftentimes aloof from reality. We're going to be meeting Friday morning from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon.
Hold my time.
Saturday, from 8:00 till 5:00, the Immigration Task Force meets this coming Friday, this coming Saturday. What we have is multiple bills that are floating through Washington. And what we're doing with our National League of Cities representatives, while we have L.A. city lobbyists in Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities, obviously representing a broader part of America, has their lobbyists working with the congressional representatives, with the senators. And our two senators from California are aware of our feelings. We know that one senator from California is somewhat in supportive of deputizing local law enforcement, which we're trying to persuade her not to do, and we're working on that endeavor. But what Mr. Parks said is, "What do I go back and say we support in this bill?" Well, we don't support in this bill. What this committee is doing is establishing what is going to work for the cities around America. Mr. Reyes has concerns, and I have concerns, Mr. Weezer, an immigrant, has concerns about the fear. Well, I have that same fear about what people are going to believe or not believe. But what we're trying to do is come up with something, again, I emphasize, that's going to work for the municipalities around the United States, not what the Washington bureaucrats want to do. And we're going to be meeting with the representatives in the White House, we're going to be meeting with the other folks that are involved in this. It's a huge issue in Washington, D.C. It's very controversial out here, very controversial. But what we're trying to do is come up with something that's going to work. But if I ask Mr. Reyes, "What parts of the bill do you like? What parts don't you like?", and to take that part back. And that's why I said I would prefer to have it continued, instead of saying, "Los Angeles doesn't want anything in there." Because I'm sure there's some parts of it that we do support, and there's many parts that we don't support. That's what Mr. Parks has in his B, or A, whichever one came up, the Second Amendment or the Third Amendment to the bill, or to the motion. So what I have is a task force. We have a lot of resource material. We have people who have been working on this for the last couple of months. This isn't the first time we're going to meet. We've been working on this continuously. And our hope is, and what the Washington bureaucrats understand, is we're going to give them recommendations, which I will bring back to this body and to this city, and the other representatives will do the same. But we're all going to be on the same page. And right now, I don't think we're on the same page when it comes to what Washington has in mind, and what we in local jurisdictions have in mind. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, another, okay.
Ms. Gruel?
And, Mr. Parks, your points are well-taken, that in a perfect world, we would be able today to discuss all of your items. Some I may agree with, some I don't, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to resolve that today. I don't know, and asking Mr. Zine, I mean, we're, I'm very pleased that you are on that committee. I'm not sure every council in the country is going to come up with, here are what we like and what we don't. It's going to be a discussion and a back and forth. And I think you have a sense of this body, of what we're looking at, that, again, there is a consensus that we do not like the existing bill. And what I think you can go into your committee on Friday is be able to share some of the issues that were raised in this council discussion, and by, whether it be Mr. Parks' motion or Mr. Reyes' motion, et cetera. But that, the message is, we've gone on record in opposition of this. I don't know if the National League of Cities committee is going to come up with recommendations on Friday and vote, but I think it's going to be hard for any of them to say exactly what the will of their body is in their, in their community. So I think, I, I trust you, I, I can't believe I'm saying that, Mr. Zine, but I'm kidding you. I, I trust you to be able to express the kinds of issues that have been raised today, so there is a good dialogue on Friday about how this bill would impact the City of Los Angeles, and some of the issues raised by all the council members today. So I just reiterate my adoption of 61, and send 61A and B, and ask that the Chair of IGR, I mean, we, you know, most people will be back by Wednesday at some point, to, again, have another meeting of the IGR to discuss some of those specifics.
Mr. Zine?
If I could just respond, that the enforcement issue seems to take the focus. What the task force is looking at is ways that we can find citizenship. What the task force is looking at is ways that we can find citizenship. While enforcement's an issue, none of the members of the committee want to deputize their local law enforcement, none of them. They believe federal's federal and local's local. So that issue of enforcement, which really seems to bog people down, we're looking at a worker program. We're looking at a right to citizenship. How do we find people who are in this country now illegally? How do we find the right to citizenship? What procedure, what process do they have to go through? One issue was send them back to their country and have them come back. We know that is not realistic and we're not supporting that. So I think if you look at the task force agenda, our agenda is to try and assimilate what we have in this country, around America, people who want to have that American dream and make that happen for them through a legal process and not just say it falls on the backs of immigration enforcement and that's it. Because that's what some of these bills call for, is nothing but enforcement. And it's broader than enforcement. People who are here illegally, who are paying taxes, who are now getting home loans from Wells Fargo Bank, who have families who go to church, who pay their taxes, who have jobs, who are laboring, whatever industry they're laboring in, they've found that American dream. Now that last part, how do they become legal citizens of the United States of America, which is their initial wish? That's what it's about. That's what we're pursuing, to make that happen in a realistic fashion.
Okay, Mr. Reyes.
I know we've been going back and forth, but the bottom line, H.R. 4437 is an enforcement-only bill. It doesn't take the comprehensive approach. It doesn't weigh out the consequences. I ask you, please vote for 61. Let's send 61 A and B back to committee. My understanding is that it's set to go on the floor on March 27th so we can set that clear message today and before March 27th. We can send to our delegation those specifics that have been brought up by Councilman Parks. We can move forward methodically within the context of committee review, but let's send the message now. It needs to be heard. The longer we take to declare our position, the less informed the public will be, the less informed our abilities to give messages to our congress members, our Senate, and let them know how we feel because no one is speaking up. We have the opportunity to do that today. Let's send the message to our federal officials. That's what your vote would do. Thank you very much.
We technically have Mr. Labange for, we have Mr. Labange for the first time. Mr. Labange, did you want to?
I want to speak. I want to call the question.
Okay, so we'll go to Mr. Weiss next.
Mr. Labange? I was going to call the question.
I want to speak.
Well, then I, I want you to speak, although I actually want to call the question also.
Okay, Mr. Labange will be the last speaker in the queue before Mr. Weiss, who I understand will be calling the question.
That was good.
Tell him.
With great experience and involved and an understanding of this city and understanding of the process in Washington, what does the CLA's office recommend here?
Well, again, procedurally, you know, well, first of all, the lobbying staff, the mayor's lobbying staff cannot take a position and lobby on anything until this body passes a resolution.
Correct.
You know, again, it's unclear when it would come out of committee and timing-wise. I don't see a problem with taking a general position of opposition to the bill and putting everyone on notice that this council is going to be coming back. We're still debating the various elements of the bill and will be coming back with proposed revisions.
Right.
If that's your wish. And with the meeting in League of Cities and if you desire to get the lobbyists out there to start sending the signals that in fact this council does not support, the city does not support the bill as it's written, I don't see a problem with taking a position in opposition now and coming back later with revisions.
With the revision, so support Mr. Reyes's bill or motion and then come back later with these other motions which come through committee.
You can do that, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, I just want to say it's very important that we let people know how great a city Los Angeles is and that this city's going to be 225 years old this September. And I know you know the story, when 44 people walked nine miles from the Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the river. And one thing that's great about a Los Angeles city councilman, it's you just look at the faces of the people and they're all Angelenos. And I think that's what our job is. The federal government has to reassign its focus, which for years has always skipped its focus. And now Ed, the man from Wisconsin, and respect to him as a representative, but I don't know if he doesn't like Canadians or what, but he's afraid of this issue here. And I think we have to have a full discussion. The federal government has to focus better on this here. I do believe in order at the border. I do believe in economic empowerment in Central America and in South America, which I think our government hasn't. They've been focused in other parts of the world. And all these other issues drive this here. No one can be faulted for coming to Los Angeles. And once they're here, they all should respect the laws and try to work hard and get good luck and break into a better way of life because that's what Los Angeles is all about. So I'm going to support Mr. Reyes's motion on this issue here, but also, Mr. Zine, with that in mind, you've had a very good flavor of discussion here because I think we're probably typical of what the Houston City Council would probably be and maybe what some of the other councils along the southern states, Phoenix City Council may be in a discussion. Certainly, there's going to be those who will ramrod and want to say no to anyone who is here, not legally. But to have an understanding of people and have an understanding of life, I think you have to look at it more in a humanitarian way than what this bill provides. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
You still called the question. The question has been called, colleagues. I will do this slowly. A yes vote closes debate. And technically, since Mr. Cardenas is on for the first time, it takes 10 votes. If you take yourself off, it takes eight votes, Mr. Cardenas. All right, Mr. Cardenas is off the queue. Everybody who wishes to be heard for a second time has been heard. That means it's an eight-vote question. All right, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. That closes debate, even though there's only one more speaker left. So with that, we have before us the original motion, 61 A and B. Which order will we be taking those up, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, actually, Ms. Gruel had moved 61, the recommendation of the CLA first.
Okay.
And, right, and then it was a second recommendation to send 61.
Okay, we'll explain this. 61 B, just as a point of information, had initially been accepted as a friendly amendment. It only takes one person to object to that for it not to be a friendly amendment and to cleave that off again. We would have a conflict otherwise between you moving just 61 and 61 already having been amended to include 61 B. So if everybody's comfortable with 61 B in place, when we vote right now on 61, it also includes, just as a point of information, 61 B since that's a friendly amendment. Again, friendly amendment is not friendly accepted by the motion maker, it's by the entire body unanimously. One person objecting makes it an unfriendly. Yes, Mr. Reyes? Want a clarification?
To be clear, 61 B allows us to take a position on 2247 now, correct? And we send the part dealing with committee issues back?
It does not conflict with the CLA's recommendations to take a position, correct? By itself, it doesn't take a position. It just adds further information about the law enforcement side and getting those discussions moving. Okay? All right? Everybody clear on that? So that's, Mr. Weisar, did you have a point of information?
The motion on the table was to approve 61 A and send, I'm sorry, 61, send A and B to council, to committee, but you've now cleared up that B was actually...
That B would not be sent necessarily unless...
It's in 61. So with the motion now is then approve 61 as amended and send A to committee. That's the motion on the table.
That's correct, if Ms. Gruel is okay with that. Otherwise, there's an inconsistency to resolve, okay? Again, it takes only one person to object to 61 B for it not to be included, but if there's no objection, that will be included, okay? So please, open the roll on that proposal, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that will move forward, and 61 A will be sent to committee for further discussion. Thank you very much. I'll be sent forthwith.
Council President?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the Mujeres de la Federación Mexicana, Mujeres de las Nídas, for their day today and I hope you enjoyed and were informed as how City Hall works. Thank you for being here.
It was a good civics lesson. Okay, that now moves us into closed session items. Mr. Labange?
From our sister city of Quanjo, please welcome Sumi Tang. Give him a hand here, Special Government Officer Sumi Tang. Give him a hand there, right there. And also, Mr. President, Chief of Protocol Emeritus for the City of Los Angeles, the great representative for Bea Lavery, that has such a wonderful job for Tom Bradley. Bea Lavery, give her a big hand right there. Thank you, Bea.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We need to now go into closed session, so my apologies, but we're going to have to ask folks to leave the council chambers in order to discuss, in accordance with California state law, closed session items. Mr. Parks, did you have a, which one?
23.
23, we will send forthwith, Mr. Clerk. 61 and 23, Mr. Clerk, forthwith, please. Anybody wishing to be heard on that? Not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
As approved, let's send that forthwith, please. And the second one?
On item one from the special meeting, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of 127,250 in the case entitled Rene Rodriguez versus City of L.A.
Okay. We have an amendment to change the counts from 9760 to 9770. Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on that? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved as well. Does that clear the desk?
Council has motions for posting an referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, March 10th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on Friday, March 10th for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused to leave at noon on Friday, March 10th for personal business. The motion is required.
That means, colleagues, just to remind folks, on the 10th, that we're down to a pretty bare quorum. So please, we're going to be starting to remind everybody at 9:00 a.m. as well with our presentations. But Mr. Zine moves and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, and Mr. Padilla is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on Friday, March 10th for city business. The motion is required.
Okay, Ms. Gruel moves. Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimous vote, and Mr. Parks will be excused.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on Friday, March 10th for city business. The motion is required.
Okay. Technically, if we have three people asking for motions, does that take us under a quorum, Mr. Clerk?
No, Mr. President. This will take you right down to a quorum on Friday.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves. I will second. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, and Mr. Zine is excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on Tuesday, April 18th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Smith is excused.
And Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on March 21st and the 29th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Labange is excused.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements, Ms. Perry? Oh, sorry, okay. Mr. Parks?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I have several announcements because I won't be here Friday, so I'm going to go through all of them, so bear with me. The Eighth District has a disaster prepared. There's training date for Monday, March 13th at the Constituent Center, 8475 South Vermont, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Contact number 323-293-9467. Also, the Los Angeles Police and Fire Department are having a women's recruitment expo Saturday, March 25th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00. And this will be at the Los Angeles Police Academy at 1880 North Academy Drive. Contact number 213-847-00, 847-9063. Also, there will be a public hearing regarding a university off-campus housing district for Tuesday, March 14th, and this housing district will impact both the First and the Eighth District. The meeting will be held, California Science Center at 6:00 p.m. at the Locur Conference Room at 700 State Drive, and there's free parking. And then also, the Young Center for Academic Cultural Enrichment will have their 20, the 2006 Annual Think Tank Summer Residency Program at USC. The program is June 27th to July 2nd, but it's required that applicants have their applications in by April 1st. Contact information is 310-670-8500. Final one I have is that we had an unfortunate incident in the Eighth District about two years ago where a young man by the name of Stevelin was killed in a homicide. And to keep his memory alive, his mother is having an ongoing annual march for the community, and I will give you the information as soon as I can find it.
Stevie Singleton. 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 Singleton.
Mr. Wesson?
Yes, members, I'd like to announce that we're having the world premiere of a play called Hope Runs Eternal at the Nate Holden Performing Arts Center, which is located at 4718 West Washington. This is the first big play that we've done in partnership with Flat Top Entertainment and Cultural Affairs. The play will run from March 11th through April 9th. It has starred, it was written by Richard Brooks, who was one of the original cast members in the Law and Order series, a lot of other notable stars. Tickets are available. You can call 310-773-8373, and I'm asking anyone in the community to join me for the premiere this Saturday, March 11th. The play begins at 8:00 and we're having a reception at 6:30.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange? I'm sorry, and Mr. Parks, you have some others?
Just one that I couldn't find.
Okay, Mr. Parks, why don't you finish that and we'll go to Ms. Labange.
The Stevelin, Stevie Singleton was a victim of a homicide a couple of years ago. On Sunday, March 26th, at 1:30 p.m. at the corner of 4610 South St. Andrews, there will be a march there that will go to 4801 Second Avenue. And this, basically in memory of him, his mother, Ms. Gwendolyn Stewart Singleton, is the executive director of the program, and her contact number is 323-295-1020, extension 224.
Thank you, my apologies, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange? Okay, anything, any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, if I can, please ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Labange?
Members, along with Councilmember Jan Perias, we adjourned one of the great Americans, Gordon Parks, who was the first African-American staff photographer at Life magazine in the late 1940s. It broke more ground in Hollywood as being the first African-American to direct a major motion picture, The Learning Tree, as well as a landmark movie Shaft. Died at 93 years old. He was a novelist, a poet, and a composer, and a real Renaissance man. One of 15 children, born in Kansas. He, his mother died when he was 15 and had to live with his sister. A few months later, he was on his own. He, interested photography was sparked in 1937 when he worked on the North Line of the North Coast Limited, a transcontinental passenger train, when someone left a magazine behind that showed photography and the dramatic photos of migrant workers. This was a program that was then by the Farm Security Administration photographing Americans and people at that time. In the stopover in Seattle, he bought his first camera for $7.50. His work is renowned throughout. He was awarded the National Medal of Arts from then-President Reagan several years ago, and his work influenced me as a photographer as well. Truly a great American. I asked Jan to comment as well. He survived by his son David and his daughters Leslie, as well as Tony. Gordon Parks.
Mr. Labange, thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry?
Yes, I told Mr. Labange I would add information that he had not already said. Mr. Parks was extremely versatile documenting chain gangs in Alabama through photography, and his assignments were broad and varied. He photographed Gloria Vanderbilt and models in Paris and had 300 major assignments, including acclaimed photo essays on segregation in the deep south, the slums of Rio de Janeiro, and black Muslims. He also shot intimate portraits of celebrities ranging from Muhammad Ali to Barbra Streisand, but poverty and powerlessness were frequent themes in his work. And his assignments with Life magazine were not without risks. While covering the civil rights movement and other events in the south with a publication, he was twice threatened with lynching. He wrote a semi-autobiographical novel entitled The Learning Tree about a smart and sensitive 15-year-old boy who experienced racism, love, and loss in a Kansas town in the 1920s, which it became a bestseller, and the movie he later wrote, produced, directed, and scored. And was, this film was among the first 25 films honored by the U.S. Library of Congress to be preserved in the National Film Registry. And he also later directed a lesser-known film called Solomon Northrop's Odyssey, a 1984 TV movie about a free black man who was sold into slavery.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other adjourning motions? Yes, Mr. Weiss?
Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning in memory of William Herskovitz, who was well-known in my district because he was the founder of Bel-Air Camera. But he'd lived an extraordinary life. He had been imprisoned in Auschwitz by the Nazis, and he escaped from Auschwitz and was one of the first escapees to bring word of the Holocaust to the broader world. He later settled in Los Angeles and founded Bel-Air Camera, which is one of the few remaining independent camera stores and continues to thrive in a day when it's very hard to make that happen. He is survived by his wife Maria, his daughters Suzanne Ponder, Micheline Keller, and Patricia Herskovitz, his granddaughters Danielle and Nicole, his grandsons David and James, and his great-granddaughter Sophia.
Mr. Wesson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, second for Mr. Labange on that.
Mr. President, if I could be added to the Gordon Parks?
Absolutely.
Gordon Parks.
Okay.
I rise today to adjourn in the memory of a dear friend and a great man, Mas Fukai. Many of you remember Mas as Supervisor Kenny Hans, Chief of Staff, and I'm sure that if our colleague Janice was here today, that she could do a much better job than I will attempt to do. Mas Fukai was 79 years old. Mas Fukai was 79 years old. He served on Gardena City Council for 28 years. He was a longtime deputy of Supervisor Kenny Han almost 18 years, four of those years as Chief of Staff. I think that he opened doors for Asian-Americans throughout the county of Los Angeles. He was born in Gardena, died in Gardena. He worked on the family farm until he and his family were relocated to an internment camp in Arizona. Instead of becoming bitter, he joined the U.S. Army, where he left with the rank of corporal. And some of you may know that I followed Mas Fukai as chief deputy when Supervisor Burke was elected. And I will never forget being so excited, I'm in my first big office, and I'm putting things in my desk, and I open a drawer, and I see a pad. And on this pad was about nine drafts of a letter that Mas was trying to compose to say to Kenny Han just how appreciative he was for affording him the opportunity to do this job and to grow as a human being. So I would last ask that all members...
Members on that, thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Vince C. Dagagni, passed away March 6th. Vince was born October 23rd, 1919, in Italy, was a resident of West Hills, self-employed jeweler in Canoga Park for over 40 years, and the oldest active merchant along Sherman Way in all-American city Canoga Park. For the last 67 years, Vince would frequently visit Henry's Restaurant for his 6:00 AM breakfast. Was a wonderful man, great inspiration to the Canoga Park community. He will be greatly missed. He is survived by his wife Virginia, son Gregory, two grandchildren, Gregory, Raymond, and one brother, Mike Dagagni. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Members, we will be meeting at 9:00 AM on Friday, March 10th. Members of the public who are watching as well, we will begin our Friday meeting at 9:00 AM, an hour earlier than is customary. We will next be in session this Friday, March 10th. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned.